Approve those three?
Yes.
D and the other one's table.
Table.
Good morning, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is the sixteenth day of August 2012. It's eight thirty in the morning. As we do all meetings, we will start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the US flag and the Texas flag. I'd like to ask Martha Galarza, who's back from her long extended trip to Bell County, to lead us in those two pledges at the appropriate time, so please rise.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Public comments, I have two. Please limit your comments to three minutes, starting off Mr. Barera, please, followed by Mr. Uresti.
Honorable County Judge, Mr. Cascos, honorable Commissioners, and my fellow Americans, recession in Economics 101 tells you that it is a period of reduced economic activity, meaning there is period of high employment, unemployment, few jobs available, less money in circulation, businesses are moving out to other nations, to Mexico, and the American, our people are short of money to spend, meaning hard times are here ahead of us. In Economics 101 that I took in college, three segments of the economy are prosperity, recession, and depression. I lived through the depression era in the 1930s as a small boy here in Brownsville. We are in a recessional period mode. In school, at Fourth Ward, at that time, across from the Buena Vida Housing Project, I remember that the government would give you a little tin cup and oatmeal for breakfast because the area was very poor. Thus, at a small age, I learned to work at odd jobs, save my money to give to my mother to help out at home. Our parents had to provide for all of us, not welfare. Provide for our school supplies, for all I need, there was no bus rides, we had to walk to school. I sold newspapers, shine shoes downtown on Saturdays, working on loading bananas at the port, and work provided by an old friend, Tony Cornese Sr., who was a supplier of the bananas from South America. I could tell you more good old days, boyhood stories, but that will be at another time. All the money that we earned while we were working shiny shoes, we gave it to our mothers to help out at home. We are in a bad economic climate now, as in the past. My point is, we taxpayers are hurting now. Ladies and gentlemen, don't spend what you don't have because all of you will be gone pretty soon as elections come around. Out of office, and the young citizens will be stuck with this humongous debt. Our pocketbooks are emptied now.
One minute, Mr. Barera.
All right. I put my three kids through college, and they're out of my pocket, they're working. Live within our means and our county affordable situation. We're not in Odessa Midland where there's flush with oil money. Tighten up, honorable judge. Don't get in this Christmas bandwagon. We're on very shaky grounds economically. Our jails are full of illegals, drug dealers, and murderers, and this is a high-cost expenditure in food, bed, wet water, electricity for these non-producers. So stay away from this pre-Christmas list, not needed, and braces for county employees.
Thank you, Mr. Barera.
Thank you.
Mr. Uresti.
Roberto Uresti, 1220, Calle Pluton, La Galaxia, Precinct 2. Judge, and members of this commission, I come here because I have to think about the races that are going to be approved, because sometimes when we come up here, it's already a done deal. What I feel is this, I one time had a little incident with some clerks at the tax office. I requested to see Mr. Isaguirre, that was two years ago. For some unknown reasons, they couldn't produce Mr. Isaguirre. Do you, do those elected officials have a schedule? How many hours they put a week? Or are they somewhere else which the public cannot reach them? The same thing goes for all of you. Is this a full-time job, but you are working at another full-time place? This is where some people that I speak to don't even know who you are in La Galaxia. They don't even know our precinct two person. They don't even wonder why we pay taxes to the county. They have no idea because we're left alone by the border, and we are right by the border. So the question I'm bringing up here is, why are we going to give more money to these elected officials that cannot budget their own money? When you're making over sixty thousand, seventy thousand, eighty thousand, you don't have enough to support yourself, and you're not in your office, this is questions that I bring up. I would love to have a job like that. I am a retired teacher, I only get eighteen hundred dollars a month. I support my ex-wife, and I support my son who goes to college, so I got another job. It's all right. I put my sixty to eighty hours a week at that part-time job. I am also disabled veteran. But the question I say is, you're not living by your means and this individuals, that you are going to give them more money because they cannot afford to live on what they're getting, and are they really working for that money? That is the question. So I would wish that all of you would consider that. If you cannot live in your own means, there's much money, we have so many people unemployed, working underground, because if you go to La Galaxia, the majority of the people there are underground workers. What that means is, they have jobs, they don't report. Let's be honest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Thank you. Oh, if you want to find Tony, he's right there.
He's right there.
Consent, any, there's only a few items on consent. Any items need to be taken out to discuss separately? I've been asked by legal to not approve item BA, BC, and BE.
BA, BC, and BE. To table those?
To table those. Moved by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second? By Commissioner Gatz, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries, thank you. Item 3A, Budget Amendments, Line Item Transfers, Enter Salary Schedules.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You have the budget amendments placed in front of you. There are line item transfers, operational purposes, and you'll see in there, the first one is a budget amendment, the line item transfer to move ten thousand from mileage reimbursement to the travel, and that should help cover the travel expenses. You've got line item transfer for the district courts, the tax assessors, the infirmary for prescription needs that have exceeded the budget, historical committee, Commissioner Precinct 4, directors. The others are grant funding, you've got HIDA, and the Health Department, for your approval.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatz, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries, claims.
Claims, payroll dated August 17th, for one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents. Warrants number 285469 through 285604. Warrant number 285605 is a contract payment under HIDA. I would recommend that for release on August the 24th, it is a payment for the month of August. Then you have claims number 285610 through 285744, for your approval. There are also Caremark claims for seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars and seventy-nine cents. We are wa, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're avoiding, request two checks to be voided, warrant number 283235 and 283536. Those checks were not received by the vendor, and we request to have them voided.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanchez to approve claims as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, thank you.
Excuse me, Judge, one more thing. I have two invoices from net data for the view function the Constable Precinct 5 had, and one of them is for three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, the other one is for three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five, and I believe the court reached an agreement that, or per Civil's Department, that these invoices, we would go ahead and process for payments, so the computers that are, yes, could get the data for that data.
Moved to approve.
So, we will run those through a manual, and they can be released tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Gatz to approve the additional two payments in net data, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item C, consideration, possible action regarding the centralized collection process for Cameron County.
As the court is aware, we went to Bell County and to visit with OCA Tuesday and Wednesday. We had a, we had two very, very good meetings. We had representatives from the tax office, Civil Council, Judge Sally Gonzalez went with us, and IT as well. We met with OCA, we've met with Mr. Lehman and two members of his staff, and they, this Cameron County was supposed to come online and implement a centralized, or rather, a court collection system since October of 2006. So we are six years behind the, behind this process, and the most-
So we're right on schedule.
The most promising, the best outcome that we had was, I know that Civil Council said they had succeeded in their, in their role in this trip, and that was to get a commitment from OCA that they would not penalize Cameron County for not being compliant. As the court is aware, we retain a ten percent commission basically on the court costs that are submitted quarterly to the state comptroller. There are a number of counties that are still working on this process that have not become fully compliant. So while we did not get any writing from them, I didn't want to push it, but they did agree to work with us, they are available, and they will give training as needed, and they were very cooperative and provided a wealth of information that Cameron County can use as we move forward with this process. The following day, we went to Bell County, met with Judge Duffield and the county auditor there, the county treasurer as well, since they are the custodians, and we also met with representative from the tax assessors. And we had a very good, long meeting with them, we received a lot of information. Bell County has a system that is completely, completely centralized. There is not one single department that receives any cash.
Let me ask you, along those lines, because of what recently happened in the District Clerk's Office, do we still have offices that are, that are accepting cash?
Yes, we do.
And why, I thought we had discussed some time back about just eliminating any cash being used, just money orders, cashier's checks, credit cards?
That was discussed from a JP function, and I think that, I know that we had conversations with the Bruce, and the, the response we received was that cash is-
Legal tender.
-legal tender, and if, if an elected official chooses to receive legal tender, and a constituent goes into paying cash, you can't really require the customer to say, you know, to come back with a money order or with a check.
Does the same hold true for the JPs?
That, well, it was discussed with the JPs, yes, I mean, it, that-
But the JPs are not taking cash?
Well, some of the JPs do, no, in Cameron County. In Bell County, in Bell County, in Cameron County, some JPs do take cash, yes.
And in Bell County?
Bell County, they receive cash, checks, money order, you know, everything, but it's a very centralized function that they have. Bell County started working on this in the 1980s, so they have a very, very good operating working system. And they have, they have, all the departments are on board, they all work together very well, they have a very good spirit of cooperativeness, and, and they're all geared toward this function of taking, you know, they don't want to handle cash. Apparently, you know, they have, as, when, you know, departments handle cash, sometimes there's a problem.
Are there some JPs that do not take cash, here in Cameron?
Yes, there are some.
Okay, so why is it that they can do that and get away with it, I guess, and others say that they cannot?
It's a policy that the JP individually takes upon himself and says, we will not accept cash.
For, for security reasons?
No, I understand what the reasons are, I mean, but what I'm saying, though, is that why is it that some will do it, and it's not a violation of accepting legal tender, yet others do not do it because there's a violation of legal tender?
I don't think that that issue has ever been pursued by any constituent that has demanded.
It's never been litigated.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, I think that obviously, cash is what we lost in the JP office, you know, in the, in, at the other building. What happened recently was cash every time. I think that there's something that we can do to pass a policy that no cash is accepted. Somebody wants to sue us for that, you know, go ahead, but I've seen a lot of offices where no cash accepted, no cash accepted. A lot of times in professional offices, no cash accepted, so I don't think that we're stepping out of the norm by requiring that. I think it's just an additional safeguard.
And then we wouldn't need to centralize collections, because then there's no worry about cash being lost.
That's right.
So it makes sense.
Well, that's true, but, I mean, even, even when you look at it from an operational standpoint, centralization is a very, very good positive move, because what it does is, it puts the function of just collecting cash into one department's hands, and that's all that they do. And that leaves staff whose function is to call the violators, to get them into pay and everything, to pursue the actual collection process without having to worry and having to handle the cash as it's coming in daily. It has proved very, to work very, very well.
It's got to take time, you know, it take, I know it takes time.
It does, yes.
I mean, I own a business. It takes time for one person to balance, to make sure that everything is in order, to make sure that, you know, what you receive is what you have, you know, that there's no pilferage in the process. It's just time.
Right, and if there's, if there's a problem, you know exactly where it, where it was. It either happened with the department that was collecting it, because every, every person will have their own till with their own ID number, or it happened when it was picked up from by armored car going to the bank.
But don't we already have that? Isn't everybody that collects money have their own till, their own ID number?
That's correct, but what I'm saying is-
Not in the JP's office.
Not, some JPs do not, but-
No, sir. I mean, that was one of the recommendations we had-
In the last report.
-from you in the last report.
Right.
That there were some that did not.
Any deficiencies that are noted are noted that one immediate day. So this process of, you know, be of an individual or of not being able to reconcile, that particular pressure would be taken away from that one individual, and all they have to do is basically handle the paper, because, I mean, what it, it doesn't take any responsibility from the JP away at all, because, or from any of the judges or any of the courts, because the, the originating office of all of these transactions is going to be the judge by statute. That's not being taken away. The, the office that would be doing the collection is going to be the one that's, that they can't receive any money or any payment unless they get a piece of paper or something, which the payer will take to them and say, this is what I'm going to pay, and here's my document to back it up, and that's it, you know? And if, if the judge has sent somebody over with a paper that says you're going to pay two hundred dollars today, and that individual has fifty dollars, they can't take it. You go back to the judge and let the judge know that you can't pay two hundred dollars, you're going to pay fifty today. So you come back to me with a paper, or a paper saying that the judge has approved you paying a lesser amount, and I will take it. And what happens in, you know, in-
So you turn away fifty dollars because you didn't get the two hundred?
That's, that's, that puts the responsibility and the statutory authority back on the judge to make a note on the record, and, and if the judge says that you can only take fifty dollars, then yes, you can take fifty dollars.
But what if the judge just instructs their clerk, it's a two hundred dollar fine? Because right now, I think the way it works is, the judge will assess the fine, they go to the clerk to pay, they tell the clerk, I only have a hundred today, can I bring a hundred next week or in two weeks? And so the clerk then gives him a form for a partial payment, and to come back and pay the balance, but the clerk, it's through the judge's office that that already gets done without having to go back, interrupt the judge while they're dealing with the next person.
Right, and, and, you know, I, you know, perhaps I misspoke, or there was a misunderstanding, but there isn't that you have to go back and visit the judge every time, but rather, the authority is coming from the judge's office.
So the judge will be supervising that person that's doing the collections in the other office?
And, that's doing the actual cash handling, the judges in Bell County do not supervise that, because that is a separate department.
Why would they supervise?
There is no supervision because-
Wants to give the authority.
No, I mean, you write on a piece of paper, you know, I mean, if, if, if the ju, if the person works in agreement with the judge, the judge says, okay, this person's going to pay fifty a week for the next three weeks, please accept fifty dollars a week from them. And that's what goes to-
That's, that's what goes to the-
The collections office.
-to the central office, and the central office collects that, and-
And so the central office would be under the treasurer, because they're the keeper of the money?
The central office would be under whomever the court delegates that authority to, okay?
So it could be under the treasurer?
It could be under the treasurer, it could be under whatever, you know, department this, you know, that, that is a court decision, OCA does not delegate that, that is up to the court, okay? What OCA's recommendation and what they have, you know, said the counties with a population in excess of a hundred thousand have to do is, they have to use a centralized collection system, okay? And, I mean, it, they're not saying that you have to set up a centralized location for payment. What this court is looking at, and which I would recommend as well, I myself as the auditor, right, not as a recommendation coming from the committee, but rather, that this particular function would serve Cameron County very well to centralize the collection.
Why would, why would a judge want to handle cash? Or why would any office want to handle cash?
The treasurer should really be the only one, if they're the keeper of the money.
You know, why would, why would any office want to handle cash if there's an opportunity to give that, you know, that ability to someone else and not have to worry about any of that? That's my question.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to address some of the comments. I know in the past, I've been a little vocal about the centralized collections and this other stuff going on. We tried not taking cash last year, and we found that sixty, sixty-five percent of the people that would come up to the window with cash and we'd send them away-
Don't come back.
We haven't seen them anymore. They don't come back. That's why we started taking the cash again. We encourage money orders, checks, but if somebody walks up with cash, we'll take it. I mean, we'd love, if you guys were to say, you know what, no more cash, we'd have no problem with it. But we tried it last year for about a month, and people just didn't come back. And that's, our, our office, that's the reason we do take the cash.
I think the issue with the cash is, is not the ability or inability. The issue is when you're dealing with cash, you need to have internal controls in place that are going to be able to balance, reconcile, and catch, you know, malfeasance or embezzlement, whatever it is. And, you know, cash is the only thing that can, that people can steal. And if you don't have the internal controls in place, the likelihood of this, of this embezzlement getting caught is, is remote, or until someone goes on vacation and it's found, or something. So the, the idea of not taking cash is simply as an internal control measure, because you don't have the people in your staff, nor, nor any judge that I know of, has enough people on their staff to have adequate internal controls. You know, you got one person doing much of everything, and because of your schedule, you don't have time, okay? And the answer is not throwing more people at it, that's not the answer. But if, in lieu of cash, the only way to fix that is to have someone that is really checking and reconciling and balancing daily, and making sure that everything ties, and that's, that's why I think the auditor's role is so critical when, when they go out and audit these things, but when they go audit, it's after the fact. And so when, when, I guess leaning towards giving her more positions, I don't know if, if she would have had those positions, would have, would have prevented the theft of anywhere, but at least it, there's a better opportunity of it getting, of getting caught sooner. So I guess my, my, my issue is, if you don't take cash, yeah, then, then we're going to have to provide internal controls that are better than what we have now, and, you know, when those offices are taking cash. That's my only concern, and as an, as an auditor, former auditor, you know, I, I see that all the time. There's just not internal controls in these small offices, and I don't know if Martha would agree with that, but, but I think that's the reality of it.
Judge, how often do you have an auditor come check your court?
Probably about once every few months.
Like twice a year, three times a year, four times? Twice a year?
Two, three times a year, I think, last year, Sadko came by.
Okay.
You know, my only other thing is, like, our tax office in Rojondo, whenever, or the clerk there is out, that office is closed, because there's nobody to replace him. So what happens, those weeks that she's on vacation, you know, the people are going to be forced to run all the way to San Benito to pay their, their ticket, or are they going to staff that office with somebody else? Because I mean, I understand the, the internal controls, the audit controls for the, the JPs, I just don't see why it's only the JPs, I mean, everybody just takes cash.
Well, one of the options may be just to reassign one of your clerks to the treasurer's office. You'll still have them in your office, but they'll report to the treasurer, because he's the collector of the money, the holder of the money.
I don't have enough clerks.
What's that?
I don't have enough clerks to do that. I mean, like I said in the past, we're still overlooking the fact that somebody still has to do the case prep, enter the tickets and everything else. Like, like I talked about last time when I was here two weeks ago, the cash collection is a very minimal part of our, the collection is a very minimal part of our day. Everything else is case filing, tickets, and stuff like that. My concern for getting up here was, what happens in the Rojondo office when that clerk in the tax assessor's office is closed, but we're giving the people, here, go pay this? If that's what the county chooses, I have no problem with doing that.
Well, no, I mean, if that's the case, it might be, you either pay in San Benito, or you pay in Brownsville, and those are the only two places you can pay.
Yeah, that's-
So then we may say, okay, we're only going to have county offices in San Benito and Brownsville. Kind of like in Kennedy County, all four JPs are in one building, the building is cut in four, and each one has their own corner. Kind of something like that.
Yeah, so those are my, my only concern was, you know, that, what, what happens.
And Judge, I guess if they don't return, like you said, that you tried it out for a month, and they don't return, then Mr. Isaguirre's office has that mechanism in place through the SCOP law to be able, I mean, they're not going to get their license plates. Sooner or later, we will get them, it would be great if we could get them right then and there.
Not only that, you can issue a warrant.
Yeah.
I mean, how many warrants have you issued in the last month for people that haven't come back to pay, you know? And then the constable serves those warrants.
Well, the warrants don't get served typically.
And why not?
They just don't.
Well, here's, I think you've opened up a little Pandora's Box for yourself, because if someone goes into pay in cash, you know we can't take it, and then the comment that you said was, well, they're not going to come back. That means you know who they are.
Yeah.
Okay, so if those people didn't come back, you know who they are, how many were issued, whatever it is you got to issue to come and pay?
That, last year, I think we, we issued like thirty warrants that, that time.
And these are all, I'm talking about the people that have left because they- And these are all, I'm talking about the people that had left because they did-
That have come in and, and not come back yet.
Okay, so did they come back to pay?
After that, no, they haven't, we haven't had any.
And there's a warrant outstanding, it's just not been collected?
See, and that's part of the problem too, why, why isn't the, the, uh, whomever's serving your warrants doing that?
Yeah, but he gives them to the constable.
Right.
Yeah, but did the warrants get to the constable to get served?
Uh, we gave them, we gave them some last year, yes. Yes, uh, some were served when we had the deputy that was assigned to us, that, uh, part timer, Ernie. And, uh, you know, it's been kinda slow after that.
So in other words, not really?
Yeah.
Correct, okay. Marta?
So we, uh, Judge Duffield from, uh, Bell County was the, the judge that, you know, basically took us under his wing and volunteered to show us the, the function and how it works and everything. Uh, he was-
Who does the collections in that county?
I'm sorry?
Who's doing the collections? The actual collector of the money? Is it one location or is it many locations?
No, they have, they have, uh, centralized locations throughout, they have satellite offices throughout the county. They have in Colleen, they have in Fort Hood, outside of Fort Hood, they have, uh, two there that do ca, that do the collection, uh, the receipting of it. Uh, they have a number of offices. I think he said they, I think the treasurer said they have about six.
Six offices?
Right, so they do, they, they are-
And how big's the county?
It's, I think it's about 100 or 150 square miles less than Cameron County. So it's, it's comparable, it's a little bit smaller than Cameron County.
And population wise?
Population, they're 75,000 less, I believe, right? So they, they're comparable in size. Uh, and, uh, from his, from his viewpoint and from the judge's viewpoints that, you know, within his precinct and, you know, in their county, uh, they were all very relieved not to have to handle-
How many JPs did they have?
I believe they have, uh, six. They were very, very relieved not to have to handle that function and as were the other offices. And, uh, they started, like I said, they started in the eighties, in the early eighties. They started with a small, they started in their adult probation office and they built a, a program in-house that, that actually does this for them. And they started with adult probation and then they got approached by other departments, you know, I mean, you're doing it for the adult probation where you do it for us, so that's how they started increasing the number of cooperating departments and then-
So they collect for everybody?
They collect for everybody. District court, county court, uh, uh, district clerk, the county clerk, uh, everything is collected by this, you know, by this one office.
Sounds like a good idea.
They, they have a, um, and like I said, it's been an in-house program, they've been transitioning into it, uh, and they continue to do modifications to, to, to improve it. Uh, they are switching now to a new software system that, I believe it's New World, Joe? New World? Uh, New Dawn?
Does Tyler have that?
No, this is a separate, but, um, at any rate, um, they have, uh, they have a very, a sense of cooperativeness and they all work, uh, very well toward implementing this. And like the judge said, it is not that they have not had, you know, problems within different departments, they have, but they have been able to reach a resolution because the goal is to improve the accountability for, for the county. And if this function can be relieved from the officials then, and it's within the statutory right, then it works much, much better. Uh, what they do is, uh, they have the satellite offices and they all prepare their deposit at the end of the day. It gets, each tiller has, each till has their own, um, their own number assigned to it. Uh, the armored car would pick up, that goes to the bank and all of the funds are deposited into a clearing account. Uh, by the next day in the morning, they run a report, uh, off of the clearing account.
Who would be "they"?
Uh, in their offices, I mean, in, in, in Bell County is the treasurers.
Okay, and that report goes where?
I'm sorry?
And that report goes where, to the auditor?
Uh, that report goes to both places. Uh, it goes to both the auditor and the treasurer in, in Bell County and, uh-
So the treasurer collects all the money?
That, well, I mean, I'm getting there.
Oh.
Yeah, the treasurer collects the cash, the cash, I mean, the daily reports and everything, he collects the cash. At the end of the day, each JP or at any time, uh, the JP can run a report, each office, whatever it is, can run a report. They, they, so at the end of the day, when they run their end of the day report, they know how much they collected, what the deposit was. And, uh, and the defendant's records are updated immediately. It goes immediately to the posting. Um, at the following day in the morning, the report gets run and you're able to track down all of the deposits there. Uh, the treasurer also, also has, you know, he pulls this report, they have this information and they reconcile the report to what the collection report says. By that point, at that point, the JP himself has already pulled his report and reconciled it to what the treasurer's office is showing was collected. So, um, as these deposits are, are in the, in the, in the clearing account, the following day, all of those funds are swept and they get, they get put in the accounts where they belong, where the collection actually belongs.
The treasurer assigns?
Yeah, from the clearing account. Well, at the time the payment is received, these accounts, the revenue line item accounts are already coded. So if I go and I pay my ticket, then, uh, that document, that piece of paper that I have that comes from that individual's office, from that elected official's office, already has the account codes on it, so they know exactly where it's going to post. Uh, it, it gets, it gets, it gets in the clearing account and then that information is, the treasurer has access to it and then they are able to, to, when they pull the funds-
Transfer into the different-
Into the clearing account, then they are able to code the deposit in the accounts that it needs to go. Um, uh, OCA does, does not, uh, say that you have to have a centralized collection system. It is a recommendation, but there is a certain process that, that each county has to follow within the court cost collection and that is what we are not in compliance with. Uh, this process that Bell County has in place is something that they have grown into. Uh, they're very proud of it and rightfully so. It provides, you know, real-time information. Uh, your, um, your revenues get posted daily. So at any time, at, during the month, you can run a report and you know exactly what has been brought in and by what office and it's very good.
Off the top of your head, do you know when they began? I think, did you say the eighties, they started this project?
The eighties.
Okay, and now today, twenty some odd years later?
Forty years.
Forty years later, right? Yeah, forty years later.
Thirty, thirty-two?
Whatever.
Well, whatever.
Several decades. Um, are, are they still finding glitches or it's taken all this time for them to, you know, to, to get to a point where it's, it's working well for them?
Uh, they have addressed the glitches as they have arisen. Uh, I mean, they have had problems, you know, they have had glitches. Uh, they have a ben, a business analyst, uh, position that came on board, they, they created a business analyst position about a year ago. And that business analyst position was filled by an internal auditor within the auditor's office. So their lead analyst works in coordination with all of the departments and with IT and gets the information and the modifications, the program modifications as, as, as they're, as they're needed.
Have they had any missing money in the last 32 years?
Yes.
With that centralized collections?
Hmm, I don't know with that centralized collection. I know prior to, they did have that. That was where they started this, we need to change something.
Ask them that, so we can-
I will.
Have an idea if it fixed the problem or just shifted it.
Uh, I, I believe they, they, they did fix it from an-
And, and as, and that's a good point. As you ask that question, ask them how long it took them to detect it. If, if they can figure it out. Was it months, was it days?
Uh, I know that we did discuss, um, any deficiencies and their response was deficiencies are noted within 24 hours.
Right. And I think you, there's always a likelihood of it getting, you know, of, of happening. The key is not that it's, it's gonna happen one way or the other. The key is catching it timely to mitigate that theft. That's, that's the key.
That's the key, yes.
That's exactly, I mean, the 24 hours, I remember when, when, I think when Cameron County's accounts got hacked several years ago?
Mm-hmm.
And because of the internal controls in place at that time, it was caught very, very quickly to minimize, to minimize the, our losses. So that's, that's the key, so just that they get caught quickly and not wait a month, 45 days. But 24 hours is pretty good.
Well, but that goes back to you needing more positions. I mean, like at the clerk's office, when was the last time that you audited them?
The county clerk?
That, no, the district clerk, whoever the missing money was?
The district clerk, we probably went about, uh, two months ago, I believe, from Sadko, to, to do a cash count at the district clerk's. We haven't done them this year. This year, they have not been done.
At all, this year?
Last October.
October of last year?
Last year.
So, I mean, so that's the thing, I mean, if you're over there every couple of months, especially a place that takes a lot of cash, you might've been able to isolate that, uh, sooner.
Right, and you're able to make your presence known-
Known, right.
Much, much quicker and the, the capabilities are there to go out more frequently. And there's different types of audits. I mean, we can go out and do a cash count, which is what we did probably, and all the cash is there that day.
Yeah, you can't count what's not there.
But we're not there-
But don't you do the receipts too? Like receipt books and numbers and making sure that-
Yes, but-
If you know about them.
Uh, you know, there's, there's different processes. I mean, uh, we don't stick around until the end of the day to follow the procedure and to see. We interview, we talk to them, they say this is what we do, we run a report, it balances, okay, your cash is here, here's your beginning change, you're, you're good. But, I mean, when you're gonna go out and do an internal control, then you're gonna go out and, and view their actual processes and are they doing what they're telling you they're doing? So there's, there's different functions and different audits that we, we, you know, do have the ca, that we don't have the capability of doing that we should be doing.
So like you, you wouldn't show up at 4:50 and say, okay, give me our receipts, all your cash, let me look at your receipt books, let me look at your sequence and be able to analyze there that, hey, something's wrong?
If we show up at that hour, then, then provided, if we're given the information and during the whole day, everything has been cash receipted and for every penny that was picked up, there was a cash receipt given, then yes, if there was a shortage, there would be. If money was taken and it was not given, issued a receipt and the money's not there anymore, uh, that creates a problem.
Okay, and do we have-
Yeah, but when you do an audit, it's, it's, it's a limited audit, you know, you don't go in there and do an in-depth-
It's not-
If somebody's good at CYA, they're gonna have an audit that shows clean. I mean, you have smart people unfortunate-
So no matter what you do, money's always gonna be able to be stolen, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
The risk is there.
The question is get, you know, catching it quickly and timely.
Having controls to prevent it.
But how do you catch it if doing an audit and all the paper matches, you still don't figure it out? What are the controls?
Uh, we go through, uh, a series of questionnaires and we try to implement as many controls with as much oversight as we can within the department and with controls that we have worked with them to implement. And, um, we go out and we check them as, as time permits.
So that will catch the thief or?
It will help. I'm not gonna tell you that we're gonna catch every single instance.
And centralizing collections?
I, I think it would be a very, very good tool that, uh, we should pursue from an auditor's perspective.
Was our, did our treasurer go with you to Bell County?
No, he did not. And, uh, I know that you had mentioned, uh, to a staff member to get an agenda item on for, for the travel. Uh, that agenda was not on, was not placed and, uh, he was not a member of the committee, so in, in an effort to keep-
Well, but don't we always, don't we always have people travel and then after the fact approve it?
We did and I, I did not receive, uh, any direction from the court to add anyone else to the committee or to, so we did not. We did not travel.
Well, in, in light of the fact that we've now discovered that the treasurer's the one that collects over there, it'd probably be a good idea for him to go check out their operation, no?
You're correct, yes. If that's the courts, then, you know, they can get it placed on the-
I would recommend that. Maybe someone put an item on so that our treasurer can go see what his new duties are gonna be?
Well, I don't think that's been decided yet, so, I mean, anybody can go that feels they're gonna do that, but remember, he's, he's the, he's the custodian of the money, not necessarily the collector of the money. Or else he'd be doing the tax officer's job as well.
Right, but if we're gonna follow the model that Bell County's put out and they put it out with their treasurer, I mean, why change what they've perfected?
I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it's all premature to decide who's gonna get the assignment of these duties.
And, and, you know, it's, it's not to say that Bell's County is perfect and it's the only, you know, I mean, it, it's a very good program and it is working. However, that is up to the court. And they, they, uh, the function and the statutory authority of the funds being deposited, you know, with the treasurer, uh, they, I mean, by putting the funds in a clearing account and the following day, the treasurer sweeps all of their, all of those monies into the accounts they belong to.
You're in compliance with all statutes?
That addresses a 24-hour compliance.
Right, I mean, that's, I think that's probably why they did it that way.
That's the beauty of it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, doing it any other way, then you then have one more hurdle to jump. Doing it with the treasurer, you're strictly in compliance because they're the ones actually taking in the money.
Correct. And, uh, one thing that, uh, the court needs to keep at the forefront of this is that in order to delegate this function, uh, to any department, um, in, in particular to begin with it at the, at the JP's office, if that is the court's intent, uh, the Odyssey program has to be on board. So that, I don't know if-
Fully functional operating?
Fully functional, yes. So I don't know if the court has any questions from a, from an IT perspective that they would like to address.
Martha, can you also maybe check with, um, with that county to see how they, um, did it resolution-wise or whatever it is they did that passed legal muster? So-
As far as, uh-
Making the transfer, delegating that to the collection? So we make sure we do it the right way if we end up going that direction?
To use their example.
Yeah, I mean, if they're doing it right and they took 32 years and they've made all the mistakes making it better, then why reinvent the wheel? Let's just copy it from them and run with it.
And, and there are a number of counties that-
That do that?
That, that use this, okay? Not use this particular, you know, Bell County's example, but rather that have a centralized- El Paso also has a centralized collection system. And there are a number of counties that, that, you know, are fully operational and it's worked very well for them. So it's not to say that theirs is the best, but they, they are highly recommended by OCA and it, uh, they, they have a really, really good program and, and rightfully so, they are very proud of it. And they have a beautiful, brand-new judicial complex that they built in 2010 that is-
All the money they saved?
Awesome. Actually, I, I will send some information, they're gonna, they sent us some information yesterday when we left. Uh, I need to look at it, but, uh, their collections have improved tremendously.
Based on the centralized model?
Yes, because it has freed up your staff to do the collection.
Other things?
Uh, they did say that, um, since they have grown into this process with each department, you know, as, as it's needed, uh, they're, they're, they did not reduce staff at any of the offices because what it in essence did was it gave the existing staff the ability gave the existing staff the ability to concentrate on what their function, you know, actually is, which is getting the absconders and, you know, bringing them in compliance with violations, citations and to speed up the judicial process as opposed to having to handle, handle cash.
So, are you saying, okay, so everybody kept their staff, but to staff the actual collections office? I mean, how many staff members were there?
This was a thirty-year process, so they were able to deal with it incrementally.
Every year they added one more?
It was not a, it was not a financial burden to them and they did not go, I'm gonna do it right now and that's it.
Rome wasn't built in a day.
Yeah, correct. So the, the impact for them was minimal, but the financial, you know, impact that they have realized because of this has been much, much greater.
Hey, but their complex isn't as beautiful as this building, is it?
You better say no.
This is historical, Martha.
This is a beautiful historic building. We were not in the historical courthouse. We were in a, in a, in a very beautiful...
Modern building.
Modern building that had a lot of Austin stone.
What's your tax rate?
I did ask that to the county, to the district, to the, to the judge, and he said, I am a JP and I have no idea. That is not my concern. But I, I, yeah, I, I will look at it, because I was curious about that, because they have wonderful facilities.
Is there a lot of oil industry in that area?
I do not believe so.
It's a military presence.
Oh, that's true.
Joe, you wanna add, would you like to add something?
I'm just here to address any questions. One of the things that we did understand is a lot of this to make the collection process work, IT has to be one hundred percent involved in the whole process. So that the auditor understands and what the treasurer's doing, the treasurer understands what the JP clerks are doing. And that was one of the things that they stressed upon us tremendously, that IT has to be involved in that whole process. So that the handshaking gets done, the right... And I guess to address one of your questions, Commissioner Souches, was they gave us a little slip, a face line. This is how much you need to go pay. That pay slip in turn get turned into the treasurer's office. They take the payment. At that point, that page slip is actually a triplicate. One copy goes to the person, one copy goes to the treasurer's office, one copy goes back to the JP. That whole process is something that has to be involved in nature. Everybody's on the same page. But it was, it was very eye-opening and...
Well, it's something to start working on.
I'm gonna try to get a meeting set up with our committee next week as soon as possible, so we can bring them all on board.
Who's, who's on the committee again?
We have someone from IT, the tax assessor, a representative from the JP, myself and Sybil.
Did anyone say to add the treasurer to that?
No, you did not. The court did not act on it. I know that...
I don't think we need official action. I think we just, you know, add somebody, you know, either the treasurer or somebody from his office. We don't need to have an agenda item on to do that. Anybody else that you think, anybody else take cash? How about anybody from, maybe from, well, no. Those are, those are the only offices that we'd be consolidating in terms of collection?
The jail, maybe? Y'all take, you have cash at the jail, right?
You might want to consider having somebody from, from the jail.
Mr. Liner?
He's about to give you the tax rate of Bell County.
Well, maybe, I would suggest, Mr. Benton Court, the treasurer, maybe you put an agenda item for next meeting so you can go up there and visit and, and see what it is. And if Mr. Liner didn't get a chance, maybe he can go with you so you can see how the jail works and, I mean, 'cause that model is the treasurer doing the collection?
The jail is always gonna take cash, because when they're booking people, they have cash on them. There, there's no way to turn it away. So the jail will always take cash.
That's why they should be included, right?
But they have to do it there with the booking officer.
Well, last year's rate was forty-three point nine five.
Forty-three, nine-five. That, that particular role is the treasurer's. The rest, you know, for record searches and things like that.
Okay, well, okay. You can do that. David, do you feel comfortable? Are you and Mike going up there? I don't know if we need to hit them again unless somebody that's already been there goes with them to, you know, I don't know. I mean, do you think just standalone guys go up there and look at their system? I don't have any problem with that. I mean, I just want to make sure that they know what they're going up to do. We don't, we don't blindside them.
No, I mean, call them in advance and say, hey, I'm the treasurer of Cameron County and I didn't make it with the last group. We'd like to come up and see what, you know, what you're about, especially if the treasurer's the one that's the main function in that county and how that model works.
In my, I would recommend that you go again. I know, but, I mean, I think just to go, just, I mean, maybe you may, may have missed something or somebody from your office or somebody
You know, I, I differ, I differ on what, what you're doing. I think that you need to find a county that implemented something a little quicker than thirty years or forty years and put in place. The centralized collection process went into effect in two thousand and six for counties of a hundred and fifty thousand or more. There's got to be counties that implemented this and made it work in a whole lot less than thirty to forty years. Find one of those counties.
Right. I can check with OCA. I, I know that El Paso is probably one of the best.
We need to go to somebody that took thirty years to do something, to do it right, to go follow their lead.
No, I, I agree, Dave.
A few years ago and implemented it and got it going and, and did it quickly, you know?
I'll, I'll check with OCA and they, they were very accommodating as well.
Yeah, and at the same time, counties that, that are comparable to us. I mean, El Paso, you mentioned El Paso County, but, you know, they're, they're three or four times bigger than we are.
Much bigger.
You know, so I mean, get a county that's...
Didn't you say Bell County was comparable to us?
Bell County's three hundred and fifteen thousand population.
Yeah, I think, I think the commissioner's issue is that, and I think it's, you know...
To get a different view from another county.
Well, to get a different view and why it took them thirty years to implement, there could be a whole range of things. You got, you know, different administrations come in and put a halt on it, you know, things of that nature, so...
But the idea would be to see what's working, what's efficient, and if we're gonna go in that route.
The guide there would be OCA.
Right, 'cause I mean, we're gonna benefit from their thirty years of research upfront. We're not gonna have to go through the thirty-year of figuring it out. We just copy their system. I mean, that's the benefit of history. We, we can look at their history and say, you know what? It works. Let's do it.
Yeah, but they didn't have computers thirty years ago, you know? I mean, they started like a centralized collection system with a completely different...
Right, but it, it evolved into what it is today.
Yeah, correct.
But there's, there's counties that implemented it after the law went into effect.
Well, just go ahead and do that. Look at it and, I mean, no need to look at big chief tablets from the eighties.
No, I mean, if it's working today with today's technology and it's working today regardless of, you know, it's, you know, a car today isn't the same as it was thirty years ago. It's, you know, progressed so much more. But it works today and, and that's what we need to look at.
Right. We need to get there quickly.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to recess this meeting in a couple of minutes to open up the other meeting and then we'll come back to this one. So let's, yeah, let's do, let's do item G. Consideration action regarding the composition of the Cameron County Salary Grievance Committee. As we've done in the past, we've, we've selected members from the grand jury pool to serve on that committee. Do I hear motion to, to implement that procedure?
Some.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatzah. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item H. Consideration selection of public members for the Cameron County Salary Grievance Committee. Our extinguished clerk. Maria Guadrope de Leon, Brownsville.
How many are you gonna do, Judge?
How many do we normally do? About fifteen?
Like twenty?
There's only...
You need twelve.
You wanna do about twenty-four?
What do we do down there, just in case?
Angelina Atkinson, San Benito. Robert Mian, Harlingen. Melissa Delgado, Rancho Viejo. Yarina Gomez, Brownsville. Rosa Azua Fernandez Lozano. Daisy Rosales, Brownsville. Mary Ann Smith, Brownsville. Cesar Castillo, Brownsville. Porfirio de Leon, Brownsville. Eliazar Solis, Brownsville. Melissa Halomo, Harlingen. Virginia Lisa Guzmán, La Feria. Nathaniel Herrera, Los Fresnos. Joshua Bennett, Harlingen. Eugenio Mejía, San Benito. Gerard De Souza, Harlingen. Aida Barbosa, Brownsville. Olga Lidia Ruiz, Brownsville. Mary Wiltz, Port Isabel. Rosa Garcia, Brownsville. Cristobal Torres, San Benito. Juadalupe Sanchez, San Benito. Almodora Hernandez, Harlingen. Thank you. For members of the public, that we will select twelve or they will be selected in the order that they were, they were picked. They will sit on the grievance committee should any elected official wish to come before the grievance committee and ask for additional compensation on top of what the court gives or not give. And they have, that elected official has the opportunity to come before that grievance committee and ask for the additional compensation. If it's, if it gets declined, obviously it doesn't come back to the court. If it's a nine-zero vote, I think there's nine people on the, on that commission for some reason. If it's a unanimous vote at that commission, then we have to fund it. We don't have any choice. If it's anything other than that, then it comes back to the commissioner's court. If it's eight to one in favor, it comes back to this court for, you know, for ratification or, or denial. So only if it's a nine-zero vote, do we have no authority to change that. So if someone comes in, wants a fifty thousand dollar raise and the grievance committee says nine-zero yes, then we have to fund it. That's never happened as far as I know, but you never know. Okay. Do I hear a motion to recess?
Some move.
Let me, let me go ahead and just acknowledge the selection that we just did. Moved by Commissioner Sanchez. Seconded by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Let me recess this meeting. Do I hear a motion to recess?
Some move.
By Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Gatzah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to open up the special meeting?
Some move.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. That, that particular item is an executive session item. Do I hear a motion to reconvene our regular meeting?
Some move.
By Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Gatzah. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item...
Wait, Commissioner, I mean Judge, okay, did you just recess the special meeting?
No, we recessed the regular meeting.
Well, it's an executive session item.
So you gotta go into executive session.
Oh, so I recessed that one?
If you want to, if you don't want to do the executive session at this point, you gotta recess.
Okay, well, let me hear a motion to recess the special meeting by Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Gatzah. To recess and then we'll come back after this meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries. Thank you, Dovia. Staying on top of things. Item D. Discussion possible action regarding the fiscal year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget. Avia?
Judge and commissioners, I place before you the update. It's similar to the one from, from Tuesday. The only difference is the hundred thousand dollars from the RMA is included in the revenues. So based on, on the discussion from Tuesday, and I guess to kind of recap, the, the, it's, it's based on the current tax rate. It does not have the half a penny shift of the road and bridge fund.
It's based on the rate that we had last year.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's how, that's how the tax revenues are included. And so at this point, excuse me, the general fund is showing a surplus of seven, just over seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. It, it still does not have the, the requested match for the pre-trial release program. It does not have funds currently for the housing of inmates out of the county and it does not include new positions, does not include salary increases for employees. The road and bridge fund is showing that balanced budget, but road materials were reduced to just over one point two million dollars in order to balance that. That's where we currently are. I know there was some discussion on Tuesday in reference to the amount that was to be recommended for the housing of inmates out of the county. I know this is collapsed.
If we can, before we do that, there was also discussion Tuesday regarding the pre-trial release. And I think based on the discussion that we had with, with all the folks that were here, it was somewhat concluded, what I, what I inferred, that if we did not fund the hundred thousand for that, and Commissioner, you were here correctly, but it would have a trickle, trickle effect in terms of, of not getting people out fast enough. I think Mr. Sines at that point said he would have to let people go, which would delay the, the processing. Is that what you gathered from it?
Correct.
So I, I think at, at that time, you know, I was convinced that we need to fund it or the, the housing or the overcrowding would, would not get better. It would get a little bit worse.
There would be exponential effects on the backend by not funding this.
Yeah, I like that exponential word. I like trickle-down, but anyway, but you're right, exponentially. Then coupled with that, the...
Well, I, the only problem with that is I expected exponential effects in a more positive way when we implemented that program. Because that program was supposed to generate enough revenues to keep it going. We initially got that grant that we matched. We were supposed to go a couple of years and in the process of the implementation of the program, it was supposed to increase revenues that pay for itself and more. So exponentially, we went in the wrong direction.
Well, but, but Commissioner, one of the things that Kevin also mentioned is as a result of their work and collection, there, there was about a hundred thousand, I think, in fees that was going to general fund, not being attributed back to their fund directly. Is that correct, Avia?
Yes, that's what he said.
Where is it?
There's, there's the, the defendants that get court-appointed attorneys. The judges will address, will assess an, an attorney fee to them.
Attorney fees.
And they, that is paid and those funds are in the general fund and they offset a portion of the cost of the indigent defense, which is in the...
But it's part of the same budget, isn't it?
Which covers the court-appointed attorney cost every year. And that, that, that had been, I mean, those costs that have been assessed have risen. They have always remained in general fund to offset some of the court-appointed attorney fees that we pay. So it, it is, you know, related and those funds are in general fund.
And it was about a hundred thousand, right?
It's about a hundred and, probably about a hundred and twenty-five thousand per annum normally.
The court-appointed attorney fees come from where?
General fund.
General fund.
Is it, how is it determined when prisoners are released? We talked about this last year. Which inmates automatically receive an attorney or are offered an attorney at no charge? How's, how's that determined?
I believe that pre-trial has a process that they follow. It's a, it's a form that gets, that when they interview the defendants and at that point, based on the results, they either qualify or they don't. I don't know if Commissioner Sanchez has any other information relative to that. How the determination is made is to indigency.
Well, in the past, before pre-trial release and indigent defense, what happened was the judges would appoint from the bench. Now Kevin's department, when someone's in court and they ask for an attorney, they'll call one of Kevin's people over to interview them and qualify them so they don't just hand out attorneys to everybody. It's a qualification that the judge isn't able to really do from the bench because they have everything going on in their court. So they'll say, can someone from pre-trial please interview this individual? They'll interview them. If they qualify, then they'll assign them an attorney right then and there. If they don't qualify, they'll say, you're gonna need to go hire an attorney. So, I mean, there's some streamlining there that, that, that saves money.
But ultimately, then it's, it's recommended to the judge or to the court?
By pre-trial.
I, I come, I agree with Commissioner Garza that it kind of went backwards this year and...
Even every year?
Yeah, well, since I've been here, it went backwards. I've only been here once. And we need to look at that and not be so easy just to cover them. Unless you hope one more year, next year will be better. What are we gonna say next year when it's, they're asking for more money because it's down again? There's gonna come a point where we have to stop funding this with, with general fund monies.
Right. Well, I think part of the issue too was when they first got started, they were given current blotch to write bonds. At some point, the bondsman complained, I think came to this court and basically we had to put a hold on Kevin saying, you don't get to go talk to people for at least twenty-four hours after the bondsman get first pickings, so the bondsman can make money. When that happened, the revenues that Kevin was bringing in went down because people aren't gonna wait a day to bond out at a cheaper rate. They want to get out of jail. But what ends up happening is the person, and that's what Kevin talked about Tuesday, the person that pays the commercial bond, by the time they get to court, they don't have any money left because they spent it all on the bond. And so they're not able to hire an attorney, so then we get saddled with the cost of indigent defense costs versus pre-trial release. On the pre-trial release side, there's actually a generation of revenue because the person's paying the pre-trial release office that three percent bond versus not writing any bonds at all.
I, I agree with you only to the point that the private bondsman and their employees and the people that work for all these people all over Cameron County are the ones that pay the taxes in this county. So they're entitled to, you know, a shot at some of that business. It shouldn't all be driven by pre-trial gets first dibs and I think that's what, and that's why we changed it.
No, I was addressing why the number went down, because Martha, the first year, they exceeded their budget and what they needed to earn, correct?
Correct, yes.
And it wasn't until we put the hold on them that they went below. And so, I mean, we kind of tied their hands in a sense by doing that. And I'm not saying it was the wrong thing to do. I'm just saying the effect of this court by doing that is what made his department not bring in the numbers that he needed to bring in.
No, I think it was the right thing to do, because again, since they had first dibs and everything, the private bondsman were basically being left in the cold and again, they're the ones that generate the taxes to go... And again, they're the ones that generate the taxes to go to this county, and they should have as equal a right or time limit to see those people as anybody else. And what happened at first, I remember when we had this conversation, was that pretrial was getting first dibs on everybody. So it was a good thing to tie their hands somewhat.
Well, but yes and no. When you tell pretrial, "You've gotta wait a day," those bondsmen are gonna see him the first day. We weren't telling pretrial because the logistics is pretrial because they're county? Our employees, they have an office in the jail. So they actually have the quicker access to the person than the private bondsman. The private bondsman isn't supposed to solicit. They can't go in there and say, "Hey, you need a bond." They've gotta wait till they get a phone call. And so what was happening is, because pretrial was interviewing people, and they were paying the 3%, nobody was calling the bondsman because they were already getting bonded out quicker. So when we tell pretrial, "You gotta wait one day before you talk to people," by then everyone's bonded out that's gonna bond out. So it really wasn't an equal footing. It was, "We're gonna make you wait a day" versus, "You know what? You set up an office outside and wait to be called by the inmate." That was the difference.
What does the law say we can do?
If we... I believe if we have our own pretrial office, they can operate within the jail. Correct?
We have to have a pretrial office. We have to.
And they can operate within the jail, correct?
I believe so. I'm not sure.
Yeah. And that was just to explain why their numbers went down. From the first year that they were in operation till now, that's been the decrease. We pretty much held them back, saying, "Don't write bonds. Give the bondsman first crack, and if they don't bond out after a day, then go talk to them."
But the whole idea was to keep the prisoners or inmates there the least amount of time that we could.
Correct.
Well, but that doesn't happen if you're holding back pretrial. That's the problem.
Yeah, the ones that can get them out is impossible.
You know, which is like... It defeats the purpose of the existence of the program.
The only thing is, and it's not, you know, just pretrial or it's not just, you know... It's a combination of things. Last year at this time, we had inmates being housed out of the county. We currently don't, so, you know...
We're saving money.
We're not spending money that we don't have budgeted, so we're just at the point...
So Javier, during the entire year, from last year to now, we've housed no one outside?
No, as since January?
December of 2011.
Of 2011, we haven't had any inmates out of the county.
So our Christmas present was not paying any out-of-town rent at hotels.
I don't believe we budgeted any money last year either.
No, we didn't, but you still spent almost $500,000.
Yes, we did.
And all lap salaries paid for that, right?
Lap salaries and I believe a reduction in overtime maybe.
Good job, Mr. Leinert.
So the point is, it's a good thing people didn't go to work.
Do what?
To have lap salaries. It's a good people didn't show up to work.
Well, they didn't get hired.
But the lap salaries are... Salaries that aren't used.
Are people that weren't hired, yeah.
Right. The lap salaries are... There's a slot, like you said, and not... People don't show up to work. It's just if they... If you don't fill the slot, then that money keeps generating. Okay. You know, all I'm saying is that, well, we were told on Tuesday that if the $100,000 was not funded, it would have... I don't think Kevin used the word exponential, but he used the word something like, "It would have an impact." And I think, Mike?
Well...
Mike, did you agree? I don't remember if you had an opinion on it or not. Okay. You know, so that's where we're at.
The exponential... The reason I use exponential is, what does it cost us every day to house someone in Brooks County, Javier? Or Martha? $48. So if we have 100 people out at $48 a day, you know, in a month, that's $120,000. $150,000 actually. So that's the exponential number I'm talking about.
Right. No, and I agree with you. So I think the question is, do we want to fund it, or we just scale it back and then see what... Again, we just see what happens.
The ounce of prevention could be worth a pound of cure, but, I mean, it would be an expensive lesson if we don't fund it, I think.
Well, and that train of thought has to be used when she either is or she isn't going to budget for the housing of inmates.
The court needs to budget.
Exactly. And I think the recommendation... I asked Mike, I think, and I think what Mike said was, two to three months? That we need to... Two months? Two to three or two? Two months. Whatever number that is. I think he says $150 at the worst case.
It's $300,000.
So it'd be $300,000, so...
That we need to put in the budget.
Well, at a minimum. Is that correct?
At a minimum, yes.
At a minimum. What is it... Yeah, let's go to that number, just so we know what we're talking about. What number are you gonna recommend that we do?
I would recommend $500,000.
Okay.
How much did we spend this year, Martha?
$520-some-odd thousand in three months.
In three months?
Yes.
Which is October, November, December?
Correct.
Yeah, it all depends on how many inmates are out.
I think there was a portion of January as well that...
Mike, can you come up, please?
I think there was a bill in January as well where we had females out still out that we weren't able to bring back in. And it may have been maybe half of January as well.
What controls, if any, or what change happened from October through December that has allowed us not to spend out-of-county?
Yeah, we... The court staffed us to open a section of the facility that wasn't open at Curazales Rucker, and we were able to bring the male inmates back in. And then it took about another month to get the female population down, so we could bring them back. But between last... When this was brought up last week, we had a significant drop in inmates. So the, you know, just the public comment on this has caused our population to go down significantly. And if we can keep that up...
Well, I think what the judge mentioned about putting together a little task force that has a continuous, you know, meeting or whatever, monthly or whatever, I mean, I think that's beneficial. Because sometimes if you know what the numbers are, we may know from you, but maybe the courthouse doesn't. Maybe the magistrate needs to be a little more on top of it, whatever, but the communication will keep it down. But my point is, because we funded those new slots, as a result of funding those new slots, we didn't have to house anymore the rest of the year.
That's correct.
And we don't anticipate this fiscal year now through the end of September, do we? Having...
To the end of this year?
To the end of this fiscal year.
We're in good shape.
We're in good shape.
But remember, we're at 250 federal inmates. We'd like to get the number where we can get the full 300 and keep the population under the 10% capacity, so... Right, as long as we can, again, a task force or get a committee together to make sure that when we get to a specific number, we need to...
Red light goes on?
Exactly. Then everyone can work together to try to reduce the...
And I think that'll work effectively based on what happened this last week. But I guess my point is, if we've already funded those new slots, and this next year's budget's gonna have those slots, do we really need to anticipate three months or two months of out-of-county? Or would one month be enough? I mean...
Well, I'd like to say $300,000 and then $100,000 for pretrial and keep it at $400,000. You know, if everyone works together, I think we can do that. And I'm talking the whole judicial system, the whole... From the jail all the way up to the probation at the end, so...
Okay. Because, I mean, the concern, and I agree, we need to look at the contingencies on what we're gonna spend out-of-county, but by the same token, if we've done a fix that's gonna go on through this next year... Because the other thing is, you mentioned 250 federal inmates. Martha, are you booking at 250 or are you booking at 300?
I'm booking at 250.
Okay. So if we anticipate 300, that'll be an increase in revenue as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Another million?
Well...
Today, yeah, I have room for them right now, but that could change in a week or two.
Well, right, but I'm just saying, if your numbers are projected based on 300, okay? If your numbers, if you're gonna base this next year with the projection of 300 inmates, and that would also be the reason why we need this $300,000 to put in housing out-of-county, then let's also book that revenue, is my point. I'd ask Martha.
I would stay at 250 because that's a relief valve for us. We can go to the marshals and ask them if they'll release 100 inmates, and that gives us some more...
Okay. So you don't anticipate going up, then?
If the population numbers stay down, then we can ask them to bring us a few at a time until we feel comfortable. And then when things get crowded again, then that's...
Lower them? Okay. And my concern, Martha, again, is if we're gonna anticipate bringing them in, let's book that revenue too, so we don't hit the tax rate.
I would keep it at 250 U.S. Marshals. From a conservative standpoint, I think that is a better economic outlook for Cameron County at this point. Once... I know that when the U.S. Marshals, when they get contacted to bring in inmates, they bring them in gradually. They don't bring them in all at one time, and then our population has a tendency to fluctuate throughout the year, so it's not anything that we can exactly say.
According to vacation schedules?
It fluctuates.
Well, and because my concern is, if every year, historically, for the last how many years, we've been sending prisoners out?
Two years. This was year 10 and 11.
Right. We send prisoners out. Are we creating that by bringing in more federal inmates? Or is that just a result of more population?
Yeah, that's population. The marshals worked extremely well with us in reducing it. They could have held us to the 300 and said, you know, "You need to outsource your inmates." We got into that problem at the beginning.
But let's take into consideration then the fix, because for the last two years, you didn't have all those extra jailers that you do now, right?
That's correct.
Because I believe when we approved the hiring of the new jailers, it was, "You wanna spend $500,000 housing them outside? Or do you wanna spend that $500,000 hiring the new jailers and we can keep them all here?"
Well, when the expansion was first opened, we only staffed half of it. So that's what got us in a little bit of trouble there because we couldn't open the whole facility. And then when we added 17 extra officers, we went ahead and opened up another wing, and that relieved the overcrowding there. We got to bring all the inmates back.
So we have one wing left, basically?
Half of one, yes, sir.
Or, yeah, half, one part.
It's half.
Forty-eight beds?
Um, 60, I believe, 60, about 68 in that section.
Sixty-eight beds?
In that section, yes, sir.
Mike, talking about the U.S. Marshal, have you all initiated any negotiations with the Marshal's Office to raise the fee that they pay us?
We requested, Commissioner, last year. We spoke with Ms. Sines. She was the acting deputy, Southern Region of Texas in Houston, and she informed us that the U.S. Marshal's Office was freezing all the per diem rates until the United States Congress can adopt a budget, and they haven't adopted one in I don't know how many years, so...
Or raise the debt ceiling?
So everything is at a standstill. They agree that, you know, we should be at least $46, $50, and as soon as they unfreeze that per diem rate, we're right on it.
We're subsidizing the federal government.
That's what we're doing right now, yes, sir.
And with relation to the task force, I wanted to ask, let's see, where is the? Joe Reyes? You know how your Odyssey program produces a daily inmate count at the jail? And I know we receive it. Who else receives it besides us?
I'll have to check on the list, ma'am. I don't know that information off the top of my head, but I'll send that TV email.
Because I would think that judicial, I mean, all the judges and the probation office and the DA should be involved in it so that everybody's aware of what's going on.
I can make that happen.
To keep tabs on them.
That's not a problem.
I think that the biggest issue, though, is that of everyone that gets the list, this bench here is the only one that has to worry about funding. Everyone else is looking at it from their perspective. The DA's looking at it as, "We gotta prosecute these people." The court's looking at it as, "These people have to stay locked up till they come and the jury decides, or they plead guilty, or we give sentence." The jail is like, "Well, we gotta hold them till they tell us otherwise." So, you know, I don't think there's the view of, "What's it costing us?" And that's, you know, since I became a commissioner, my eyes were open more because when I was in the courtroom, I never really anticipated, "Well, by not working out the case today on someone that's in jail and resetting it for two weeks, it's gonna cost, you know, several hundred dollars to house this person." When, if I work it out today, they plead, "He's gone today," I just save two weeks of housing that person. And I don't think the mentality has trickled into the other people's area or scope of work because that's not one of their functions. They just look at it from their point of view. So this task force, I think, will help educate and enlighten some of the other departments to help us, you know, explain, "Well, this is why we can't give raises to employees, or this is why our budget's so tight because we're not working efficiently together."
Commissioner Benavides, I'd just like to say, if you do get a report from the computer center, I would suggest you get one in descending order from days in jail, because that'll give you, you know, how many years this person's been in jail, the next person, next person. And then it'll give you the court, and it'll give you the reason why, so... That's more helpful than just to get a daily jail population report. No, you need to see exactly who, how many days they've been here first, you know, going by 600, 549.
There's some people that have been there a long time for various reasons. I know that the DNA testing on some cases can take months. And then what'll happen sometimes is, you're getting close to the point of trial, and then it's discovered that some stuff wasn't tested, and you need that evidence tested before you go to trial, both from a prosecution standpoint and a defense standpoint. So it delays, and the person's in jail because it's a murder or, you know, a high-profile crime that you don't wanna necessarily just say, "Oh, we'll give you a PR bond, come back next year." So, you know, we are gonna have those rare instances where people are there a long time, but because of factors outside of local control, it's just something we don't have any authority over. So I guess we're back to pretrial release match?
Having said all of that, you know, and I think you brought up a good point, Commissioner, is that the judges, the DA, they're looking at it from a judicial and prosecutorial, you know, window. And I don't think they think about the financial consequence, because you didn't as a JP until you get here, then you realize the challenges that we have. So for those that are listening, Judge Goncalves, look at the financial side as well. No, you do a good job. Anyway, the... Well, let's go back. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we need to go back, and look, we're getting short of time. I don't wanna sit here till the last day in September before we pass a budget. We need to get off-center. So we need to decide what we're gonna do in terms of the... Because all that is contingent on what we can or cannot do with employees. Because I think most of the court, I think all of the court has said there would be no tax rate increase, you know, to do this.
You know, we're gonna balance a budget with the rate that we have. So we're gonna have to make some, either some cuts or not do things that we want to do. But we need to get off center on the, that's the biggest ticket item Martha, saying we have to go with your, we don't have to, but I would go with your recommendation.
If the court wants to budget three hundred thousand for housing of inmates, then the recommendation is that effective October first, that the court pass a resolution to sweep all lapse salaries and to reserve them as a contingency. Because that is what will serve to, to fund.
Okay, so then the three hundred thousand you're talking about plus?
For housing of inmates.
Plus, yeah, for housing of inmates.
You're saying plus sweeping?
Yes.
Or in lieu of sweeping?
No, plus sweeping. Because I don't think you're, you're not, you're not, go ahead. Well, because.
My recommendation is that if the court wishes to only set aside three hundred thousand for housing of inmates, okay, then the recommendation. Oh, that's, that's your right Commissioner? Effective October first, that the court pass a resolution that as, as salaries lapse during fiscal year two thousand thirteen, that, that budget be swept and those funds be set aside as a contingency, which is what the court has done in fiscal year twelve. That is my recommendation.
Is it up to the five hundred thousand? Does lapse salaries run how much a year roughly?
Three.
About three?
About three, three hundred thousand.
Speaking of that, were there any positions that weren't filled all year long?
Yes.
Because maybe we can eliminate some of those if they weren't filled.
Can we get a list?
Yes, I, I know of two off the top of my head.
And we made it the whole year without those employees?
Yes.
Well, with the exception of the interpreter because we need, we need the interpreter.
That one was not the whole year.
Okay.
I know there was, there's a secretarial position that was, that's within the elections office that hasn't been filled all year. I don't know why, but.
Okay. And we made it through the election?
We swept the lapse salaries.
What else?
But I know he was asking to transfer one position from the other government elections fund to the general, the computer technician that he has within his office, to the general fund. But he didn't ask to reclassify that secretary general position, so I don't know. But it has been vacant all year.
We need to tighten up.
Yes, and there's a position that's actually split between the general fund, Roden Bridge, and the parks, which is the administrative services director that hasn't been filled all year either. It's split between.
And I've talked to Pete that he needs to look at filling that position or if you're not, then we eliminate it. We don't need it.
How much do those two add to the budget if we eliminate them? Oh, the parks and bridges?
Well, it's split between Roden Bridge, Parks, and General Fund.
It's not much.
Yeah, it's not much. The, the secretarial, I think it was thirty-something plus four hundred, so around forty thousand dollars.
Judge Gonzalez is here and he needs a clerk, so maybe we can shift that one over.
That, that's why he's here. I believe he wanted to.
Before we get to the judge, I know he's been anxiously waiting there.
He's gotta knock it with people waiting too, so.
The, you want to go to his item or?
It's part of the budget discussion. Whatever he wants to do.
But I, I don't believe we've reached a consensus on the, on the housing of inmates and my concern is not budgeting anything and then something occurring that is in all likelihood, it's been happening the last couple of years.
I, I think though Judge, the, what we haven't had the last couple of years that, that we need to consider for this year is the, those new jailers. I mean, we didn't have those the last couple of years. Had we had those jailers, would that have avoided us? You know, Mike, the calculations, had we had those jailers two years ago?
We would have still had people out.
No, no, but my question is these last two years that we had to send prisoners out, had we had those seventeen jailers already on staff and working?
That's correct.
How much would we have saved not sending prisoners out?
You have to remember that once they were able, in order for them to be able to bring back the prisoners, they also received a waiver from the US Marshals from the three hundred that we. So it was a joint effort there. It was.
Well, but we could take that into consideration as well because we still have that waiver, right?
Well, I mean, they could hold us to it one day. If we asked them to what, they'll be, for the last two years.
That's true, very true.
But if.
That we're not booking?
That's right. I mean, I think the, you, you need to say that louder so everybody can hear because.
The contract stipulates that we have to reserve beds for them. That doesn't mean they're gonna have those beds.
Has that ever been a problem with the proximity that we have to the federal courthouse? How, how long ago? Was it a problem last month, last week?
Right, yeah, it's been, it's been a few years. I mean, all the, all the attorneys want their clients, you know, in our beds. They don't want to go to Brooks or.
I don't blame them. Still on drive.
But if we, if we go to three hundred, that just reduces our state numbers and, and puts a burden on us there, so.
Well, no, but we're at two fifty, right? And that's what we're booking is two fifty revenue. So if we're gonna book it on the revenue side at two fifty, then let's consider those other beds empty too. I mean, not push ourselves. Because one of the things that we added to this year's budget are those seventeen slots. So the contingency of the two or three hundred thousand Judge has already been worked into those seventeen slots. I mean, let's not forget about that.
If we can stay where we're at right now today till the end of the year, we'll be in good shape.
And, and we've been where we're at today typically since January, correct?
Well, no, about two weeks ago we got into some trouble.
But after that, red light went up and we're good.
If we can stay like this until, till February, we're, we'll make the rest of the.
And I think that's what Commissioner Garza's saying, that we've already made some concessions. In other words, the three hundred thou, or actually, what did it cost for the seventeen positions? Like five hundred, right? We've already, by adding those positions, we've in effect, for this year's budget, put six hundred and seventy thousand towards housing them outside of the county, but we're doing it in-house. So, you know, let's not forget that as we look at these numbers. I mean, I understand Martha, we don't want to be in a situation where we have to hit fund balance or, or we're in a, in a tight crunch, but by the same token, let's look at what we have invested. Because those hundred, six hundred and seventy thousand weren't part of last year's budget. They are in this year's budget. So we've already made that much of a contingency. If we add three hundred thousand, we're looking at about almost a million.
And it's a recommendation. Ultimately, it's up to, to the court to decide whether they want to fund that or not. The only thing is that even if we'd had those seventeen officers last year, we would have still had inmates outside of the county.
How many?
Because the additional, how many inmates were you able to house in that section? Sixty-eight? Sixty-eight. And we had at the highest last year, a hundred inmates out? About two hundred inmates out.
And what was the number that we spent on those two hundred?
A little bit closer to the mic.
I think last year housing cost was about one point one.
One point one million. And that's because we didn't have the two hundred and fifty variance versus three hundred, correct?
Yeah, there's, there was a few other factors, classification issues. When the females get to, and we have ninety-two female beds. The state only wants us to put eighty-two in there. So whenever, we, we exceeded that number, we had to, we had to send them off.
I don't think we should lock women up anyway.
Well, I don't either. And, and there's a lot of poor people in jail too that don't need to be there, I, I think. But that's another issue.
The electronic monitoring, the Commissioner Hernandez, yeah. Reduce.
If the judges cooperate on that issue.
I know Judge Gonzalez will cooperate.
We spent, you know, MGT, they did a pretty thorough study and it, and the first three pages makes those recommendations of what we should do as a county to try to reduce these, these numbers. There's, there's a number of options. They listed about a dozen of them. So all, all those are on the table. If we can just continue like this, I think we can keep the population down. If we can get to February, we'll be in good shape. We'll be able to go out the rest of the year. Historically, it's been these months right here, October, November, December, January, that we get in a little bit of trouble.
Mike, you had earlier said two months. Okay, so what I'm hearing is if, if things go well the way they're going now, then we don't need the two months. But are you prepared? No, I'm like, that's not fair to ask you that because this is the numbers.
Between now and, and, and January first, I don't know. I can't forecast that. I don't know what's gonna.
Yeah, and we have to adopt the budget October, so, you know, I understand the, I understand the issue because the more money we, we put in that, the less money we've got to do other things. I understand that. But our fund balance is not very strong and I, I just don't think we need to hit it during the year because we, we were reluctant to do something. Martha, on the, how much would be the, if we, how about if we passed a resolution sweeping lapse salaries October first to go strictly into the housing of inmates? How much would that generate potentially?
Three.
Maybe where between two to three hundred, maybe a little bit more.
Okay. So if, if we pass that resolution and, and we added a hundred thousand dollars to the, to the inmate, the housing of the inmates, would, would you be, would you be comfortable with, with, well, not sleepy comfortable, but just comfortable to do something? I mean, because look, it's gonna be very hard for me to vote on a budget that you're saying, I'm telling you, I don't recommend this. And, I mean, you're, you're, you guys are the, are the numbers guys. I mean, I mean, the judges are telling us, Mike is telling us, Kevin Sein's told us, you're telling us that we have to do something to ease the overcrowding. Until this task force gets together and comes up with a plan, we have to book something today or we should book something today. So the question is, would you be, would you be okay booking a hundred thousand for the inmate? Plus the sweeping of the, we passed a resolution sweeping salaries of whatever the number is as, as a safety net.
I think that the court at the very, at, at a bare minimum needs to do the, the resolution to sweep the lapse salaries.
Right, let's assume that we do that.
Your bare, bare minimum against my recommendation would be a hundred thousand. You know, I, I mean, if, if you're planning to pursue it from a, from the standpoint of having a committee and address it and really work on it, really meet on it and, and try to resolve all these, all these issues as they come up, you know, it, it, I mean, it has a potential to work.
Are you willing to be on that committee?
I have too many already.
Why don't you two?
Well. I, I understand. And I mean, so long as the court, if, if we have a housing population, a, a problem that is, you know, rising and rising, the court needs to be aware and they need to be receptive that obviously there's something wrong that the committee is, is lacking. And that we can get a call from the jail saying, hey, we're sending out fifty inmates saying, I need a PO. And we have to issue it. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that would impact negatively. And if our costs, you'll, the court would also, should keep in mind that part of our function in the bond rating agencies, that is one of the questions that gets addressed every single time. Do you have, are you housing inmates out of county? Have you set budget? And our answer is either yea or nay. And, and if not, why are your costs so high?
Monthly.
Or is a committee on this?
Of the prior month?
I think that's a good idea. Very good.
And, you know, have the magistrate here and, you know, maybe someone from the DA's office to, to kind of.
Okay, let's, 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 let's pursue the task force issue. Who would be on that task force?
I would suggest someone from the district court, someone from the county court at law, someone from the DA's office, auditor's office, jail, pre-trial release, probation.
Seven?
And maybe one of us.
Seven or eight? Okay, well, let's, let's do that. Write those down and then contact all those folks to have a representative and place that item on the agenda for the next regular meeting.
Maybe even the district clerk's office because there's the, the paper-ready stuff that we talked about with.
Well, then you need county clerks as well.
Did I say district clerk?
Yes, you did.
I said district court, I think.
You said district clerk and county court at law.
County court, all the judges and district and county clerk. I mean, the district clerk more because of the.
And how about county clerk?
Yeah.
Same thing.
The paper that holds them, that we were talking about, they're not paper-ready to go. That's an important factor too.
Well, that's good for this coming year, but doesn't, it doesn't solve what we want, what we need to do in the next couple of weeks.
What, what does the court want to allocate if any? Or which of these items are you?
The money's there, but it's okay.
Yeah, but there's no, but, but you know, look, there's no consequence. I mean, you know, whether they do this or not, there's no consequence to, to some of these folks. I mean, what's gonna happen here short, it's not my problem.
I think the creation of this task force though will help the communication and the understanding among the departments that maybe is not going on right now. I mean, I think that's gonna be a, a great benefit. Because, for instance, we don't know who the next DA is gonna be. But let's just, for example, if it's Louis Sein's, who's one of the candidates, what does he have? He's been the magistrate. So he's seen firsthand the jail overcrowding and what's going on. So maybe as a DA, he might be a little more receptive to say, you know what, before the ninety days come on the habeas, we'll release this guy. Or before the thirty days, we'll agree to release. Or, you know, be tougher on the agencies saying, if you don't submit your paperwork, we're gonna dismiss it. And he, he did basically allude to that at the meeting Tuesday, that, you know, he used the thirty and ninety day because statutorily that's a requirement. But, you know, being that he's seen it firsthand and he has a good knowledge, he might be a little more receptive to make things happen quicker. Not saying that Chuck wouldn't, but I mean, you know, he's seen it. Right, Chuck wasn't here.
And so, I mean, we didn't, we didn't budget any housing of inmate money for two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and we did spend a large amount of money. You know, it is the court's decision and so long as the court, I mean, so long as the court is aware that this situation may come up and we may have to spend the money and we're gonna have to pull the money from, if there are no lapse salaries, it's gonna have to hit fund balance.
Martha, last, last year we weren't, it was, we, we weren't aware of how volatilable this issue was. I think everybody in this commission is well aware of it now with the committee and stuff. I agree with Commissioner Garza. Yeah, I don't think we should, you know, I think we can stay within the budget. We, we're putting money out there so we know we can spend X amount of dollars. I'd rather put zero out there and spend zero. And I think we can do it. Yeah, if we're wrong, we'll know. We'll know within six months whether we made the right decision. We can come back and do an adjustment to the budget, a major adjustment. That's not a problem.
Yeah, but that adjustment goes to fund balance.
I know that, well, that's, yeah. You either take it out of fund balance now or then.
No, 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 you don't take it out now. You budget it, you budget it now.
If you budget it, you're taking it out of fund balance. You're, you're saying, well, that's not gonna be there.
All I can tell you is that fund balances should not be hit during the year for anything unless it's an emergency.
I think we've made a lot of change. We've made a lot of change that has gotten us to where we're not housing people out. And it's a combination of things. And we're adding to that with this task force, with electronic monitoring release, with, you know, different things that we're looking at doing. So it's not like we're not considering, oh, we're gonna have to house people outside. I mean, we've, we're doing everything we can so we don't have to budget that, so we don't have to look at, that's revenue that, well, if we have it there, you'll spend it. A lot of, I mean, he's right. It's there, well, if we go over, it's okay. We've got a hundred thousand in there. I'd rather say, you know what, we don't have it, we figure it out, we're not gonna be able to spend it, than going that other route.
Okay, well then let's, let's go ahead and wrap it up on this particular issue. We either, what do y'all want to do? I mean, that way he don't have to come back and he can plug a number or plug no number. I think at a minimum, we, we pass the resolution October first to sweep.
I don't have a problem with that either.
So that's the resolution we're gonna do October first. Okay, now, let's look at dollars now. I think it's a mistake and just go on the record, and I'm not gonna vote against the whole budget for that. But I think it's a mistake not setting aside some money for this. If, if, if it, if it happened, what Mike is saying, everything is hunky-dory. Fine. No, no, we're not setting it aside because if, if those positions get filled, there is no lapse. I mean, I know historically they don't.
Well, we just want to approve the hires.
Yeah, exactly. That may what we, we may have to do. So anyway, I mean, again, so is there, is there a number that, that I believe at a minimum, we should set up a hundred thousand plus that. But if the, the wishes the court not to do anything, that's fine. But I think it's a mistake. Sophie, what do you want to do? Okay, zero. Zero. I think a hundred. Commissioner, you say zero. Commissioner Sanchez?
Zero.
Zero. Well, we've already done that. We, we've already done that, okay.
But what, but we look at the task force, we look at electronic, I mean, we're gonna do that.
Yeah, we can do all that.
We're making contingencies for that.
Unfortunately, well, but unfortunately, you, you can't put a number on that as to what the impact's gonna be having the task force and the monitoring. There's nothing that you can book. It's, it's all speculative. I mean, it, it might save us money. I think it will. I think you're right. I think it's a step in the right direction. But you can't quantify and put a dollar number, this is gonna save us two hundred thousand dollars. We do not know that. Maybe at the end of next, of this, of twenty twelve, we will know. Because, I mean, at the end of the fiscal year of twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we'll know because we'll have some historical information. But right now, we do not. But anyway, so I guess for now, on, on an unofficial four to one vote, the, put zero. Now, how about on the, on the pre-trial release? What do y'all want to do with that?
I can support the hundred thousand. Okay, Commissioner, you want to support a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Hundred thousand? No?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand?
Well, that's what, that's what we need, right? That's the match? To keep them going?
Well, to keep them going the way they are.
I would say we need to. If not, we're gonna pay.
All right. And I support the hundred thousand too, so it's four to one the other way. Okay, on the county, okay, Judge Gonzalez? Okay, on the county, okay, Judge Gonzalez? So, Javier, you're, you're clear, hundred thousand pretrial, zero for inmate, other than the resolution. Now, we come to Judge Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I just wanted to bring the, an issue that has, I guess, historically been part of Cameron County. County Court Three, when it was created, did not have a clerk assigned to it. So as you probably don't know, County Court Three is the only court of record in the entire courthouse that does not have a clerk. All right, this has become an issue, because with the implementation of Odyssey, a lot of the dude, what would happen bef, previously, what would happen, is we'd have paper dockets, and so we'd have staff writing down entries. Those entries would then get transferred to the clerk's office, clerk's office would then transfer them to what was called reflections, that was the previous system before Odyssey. Those duties got shifted over to the court staff, so this has been a recent issue. That's why th, this issue hasn't come up in the past. And so now, what court staff has to do is they have to be in court with me, handling attorneys, handling paperwork, taking notes, and as you can imagine, I've, well, you, you probably don't know, but I'm probably one of the faster-speaking judges there in the courthouse, and probably one of the most, since I've dealt with budget matters for over six years, probably one of the most sympathetic to budget matters. But since, since I'm in there, they're taking handwritten notes, and then the entire afternoon, since Odyssey is a, a live system, the entire afternoon, they're, they're inputting those notes into Odyssey. Now, as, I, I think our esteemed clerk, Mr. Rivera, can attest to this, that, that is a difficult chore to, to take care of without a clerk assigned.
What have you been doing up to this point without that clerk? Are you been...
The, the phones go unanswered, there's long hours, if we're, we fall behind on dockets. We've been doing less arraignments every now and then, just to be able to keep up with the flow. So there has been, there has been a reduced output in County Court of Law Number Three because of that employee. And, and like I said, this wasn't a, this wasn't so much an issue in the past. In the past, County Court One's clerk, file clerk, was shared with County Court Three, and so that clerk would split their time between the two. But that has become an impossibility with the implementation of Odyssey, and those, those duties getting shifted over to court staff. I understand, you know, after hearing some of the, the talks, that there may be some employees in the JP offices in San Benito. I'm hoping that, or my pitch to use is perhaps to transfer the administrator over there to my court as a clerk, and so that this would be a, a budget-neutral proposition. And, and like I said, I understand that there's, there's several people, I'm sure, that could use the help. I would just hope that you would consider, you know, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer the questions.
How's, Judge, how's the salary, is the salary at that administrator commensurate with, with this salary?
I am, I am almost certain that, I, I think the salary for the administrator...
It's like five thousand less, I think.
For the administrator in JP?
They get like thirty-five, I think.
Okay, well, the, a file clerk only gets, my understanding, gets thirty.
Well, but keep in mind that this number that we're looking at includes benefits and fringe.
Well, I, I think the, I think the number is twenty-two, but with benefits and fringe, it goes up to thirty. I, I'm, you guys will have to check that, but I'm pretty sure that it'll either be budget-neutral or a budget savings, because a clerk typically gets less than an administrator.
I don't have, you know, unless there's some discussion regarding, I mean, some concern moving that, I don't have any problem moving that, I think that's a good idea.
My only concern for that employee, if, if we reduce the pay, though, 'cause one of the things that, that's gonna be added to that employee is a drive to Brownsville that they don't have, and then we're gonna reduce their pay.
Well, we're not, I don't know if we're transferring employee or transferring slot.
I, I just need the help, either one would be fine with me.
Yeah, I mean, but you, you, we have to, you know, do, do the advertising and all that. I mean, it's, it's a slot that we're, that we're transferring, not, not the person.
Well, but then we're...
I mean, the person can go, I'm not saying that.
Person's out of a job, then, I mean...
No, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is that we, you transfer the slot, you don't transfer the person.
Judge, would you have a problem taking that employee, so they're not out of work?
No, I would, I would not have any problem at all, and in fact, I've talked to Judge Sanchez about that possibility, and he wasn't opposed to it.
Okay. I don't have any, I mean, I don't, you know, if we need to supplement... Yeah, well, I mean, if we need to, you know, if we need to, I don't wanna get in a situation where we have, again, you know, same people doing the same work in the same office with that large of a discrepancy, so I, you know, instead of forty thousand dollars here, we may need to come up with five or seventy-five hundred dollars to match it. Javier?
Actually, the position in the JP's office, is what the judge was trying to say, gets paid more than a clerk in the County Courts at Law.
Oh, okay, so it's gonna come down, then? All right, I've got no problem with that, Judge.
Can we, can we leave the salary the same?
Then you'll have, yeah, next year, they're gonna come back and say, well, this one is making more than mine.
Well, how much does the, how much do the other ones make?
Well, there, there are two different positions. He's asking for a clerk in the positions in the, in the JP. It's, I think the lowest one is twenty-two, twenty-two, and they go up to thirty, thirty-two. And so, in that office, I think there's two.
So, but what does the clerk at the county court pay?
Twenty, it's like twenty, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty, so she, it would be like a ten thousand dollar pay cut?
But like I said, there's two positions within that JP court, so.
Well, but the problem is, we're not gonna be able to leave two administrators in the JP court. 'Cause right now, there's two administrators, there's only gonna be one administrator, they can't have two. So it's not a matter of taking the, the lesser pay, I mean, it's an administrator that'll, that'll go, but the concern is the, the pay.
I should call it something else, instead of a clerk.
Commissioner, just on, on that note, as far as taking a clerk from San Benito, I know Judge Sanchez has expressed, according to Judge Gonzalez, that he's okay with that. I'm not, because of the amount of work that comes out of that office. To reduce that to one clerk, when you have La Feria that has four clerks, that doesn't bring in the revenue that that office does. I just don't understand how taking a clerk from this office in San Benito, is at sixty to eighty thousand a month, with two clerks, and you have La Feria with four clerks at forty-five thousand a month. To me, I'm just asking to reconsider taking it from Judge Sanchez's court, where he won't be there in January, and reconsider another option, which is a clerk from precinct seven. Five-three now.
I think he has, he has a valid point. And one of the things that, that I haven't brought to the court yet, 'cause I'm still working on, is actually reshifting some employers around, and, and relooking at possible redundancy in the amount of staff we have everywhere, and I'll bring that at our next meeting, or whatever the next meeting is. I wanna, I'll bring you a list, I'm just not ready yet. But I think there's a val, it's a very valid point by the judge, that he needs it, but there's no doubt in my mind that Judge Gonzalez, we need to give him that slot, 'cause there will be room.
It doesn't matter to you where they come from, as long as you get a...
No, no, I just, I just need the help, I, I have suffered a bit with the docketing.
I guess what I'm, what I'm sensing is that we're gonna, we're gonna fund, we're gonna, we're gonna provide that slot.
Where it come from, where it comes from, we don't know yet.
Yeah, but it, but it's gonna be, well, but it's gonna be pretty much a budget-neutral...
Yes.
Item, because if, if what Judge...
Flores.
Yeah, Judge, I couldn't see you. Well, Judge Flores is saying, I mean, if, if, if the La Feria has four, he's got two, I mean, maybe we can shift one from the La Feria office, or shift the slot from the La Feria office over, over to you.
I'll, I'll work with whomever you decide to, to shift over.
Okay, I mean, either way, just so it's budget-neutral, so I think you can, it, would it be safe to say that...
Sure, we'll give him a slot.
Yes, yes. We're gonna provide a slot to him, it'll be just budget-neutral, okay?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, guys.
If I could be excused, I do have a docket I need to get back to.
Thank, thank you for being here and being patient. Hey, will you share your experience with the other two County Court of Law judges?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I mean, I come here, I, I miss being here, 'cause I, I miss the conversations and everything, but I think I have a better idea than most judges, the tough decisions that you all go through. And so when I come here, I understand that, you know, I'm not the only one with, with my handout, and so I appreciate you taking into consideration, and I understand. In, in, in line with the previous discussion, I do hold a jail docket at least every other day to make sure that we try to dispose of them, because I do take cost in consideration. And so if, if we have people in jail that aren't being, that their cases are, are paper-ready, ready to be disposed of in court, then I make sure that they have a court setting for, for that to take place.
Judge, thank you very much, and you know, you look, I was, I was just, I was just listening to you, and it's amazing how, how you resemble Paul Ryan. A little shorter, and, thank you for being here.
Yeah, we're not gonna vote on that.
I think it's the haircut. Okay, so what we have left right now, according to this number, is six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So far, that's funding zero for the inmate, and one hundred thousand for the pretrial release. Is there anything else out there that we're, that we're missing?
Well, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's out there that's been requested, but as far as what's been discussed over the past few meetings, that's, that's it. Yes, but there are...
Okay, so I, I still think that if, if you look at the, at the schedule in terms of salary increases, the only one that we can fund right now with what we have available is the five-hundred dollar increase.
Correct.
That's it, as I can see, unless, unless there's some kind of windfall between now and the next meeting or something. But what, what about, we were gonna ask Martha to look at possible new revenues, assigning warrants? Oh, the warrants? Do you have a number yet?
I sent some information to the court this past Monday, I guess. And there, if, if you'll remember, Commissioner Sanchez, at that point, when the warrant officers were being scrutinized, they had a number of financial information that they sent. The problem was that, the problem was that it couldn't be quantified, as far as to where it was going. The figures that, that I sent show a hundred and thirty thousand for a nine-month operation. I need to look at them and compare that to the data that they submitted. Now, I understand that it was difficult to quantify it, because it's not just the warrant officer collection that we're looking at, we're also looking at an increase by serving warrants and the court costs being collected as well, so...
And the fine?
Yeah, there's a, there, there's a ripple effect there that would be felt. I, I have not looked at it in depth like I would like to, but there has not been any discussion from the court as far as any reallocation of resources for the JPs to give them a, an officer that could actually do this function, that, that's what they would do.
Well, if you could come up with a number, I think it'd probably be easier for that discussion to take place, I mean...
I mean, is the court still interested in...
The numbers did not look that good in the report that you sent me.
Right, and the court should consider also that these were two or three warrant officers that worked so many weeks here, I mean, they worked in different locations, and they were not under, I don't think they were under any particular officials...
Supervision.
Well, they were supervised very loosely.
They were on a rotating basis.
They'd go from court to court, but this would be under the direction of one direct judge.
Correct, correct, right.
So I think the, plus the other thing...
The potential is there.
The potential, and if we say, we're gonna do this one year and see what it yields, I think there's more pressure then on the employee to say, I gotta produce, if not, my position may be eliminated.
Who, who is the commissioning agent, for example, in the warrant officer for five-one?
It's a constable, Constable Gonzalez.
What if the constable says, I'm not gonna give up somebody and commission him?
That's, I...
They can do that.
I don't know.
Right? I mean, it's gotta be like a cooperative agreement between them.
Or we'd have to go to the sheriff or someone else.
Well, and the sheriff's not gonna commission somebody he doesn't directly supervise, he's already told us that.
Right.
And you can't blame him for it, you know, I mean, it's...
Commissioner, Dan, you were saying that Harlingen JP has a warrant officer in Judge Sally's court. Are you able to separate the actual income that that warrant officer brings in versus the JP court?
Martha has reports on that. That's why I recommended it.
Just a warrant officer, what they're actually bringing in?
Well, they serve as a warrant officer bailiff, so it's a dual...
But you're able to quantify their collection effort?
Uh, not right off the top of my head, it is substantial.
But you qualify total collections for the office?
Well, there's an actual, uh...
It's an attributed amount to him, right?
Yes, it is.
She can give us the real number.
Attributed, or, or fat?
Fat. It's attributed to his effort. She has a real number.
I mean, we do get the information, I just don't have it with me right now. We can send the information as to what...
I think that's part of the, of our determination, would be based on how good that number, it was working there, it might work, now, I don't say it's gonna work in every JP's office.
Might work in some.
Yeah, on, on the bigger ones, though.
So in the spirit of cooperativeness, that's where you would have to find a, a, you know, constable that would be able to...
Willing to assign an officer to the court?
Deputize, yes.
And maybe we can have those conversations with the JPs and the constables.
Right, well, and it probably alleviates the constable, because then they don't have to worry about the overall collection, because they know one of the employees is just gonna be the court. They don't have to worry about, do I need to get a bailiff there, do I need to do this, that? I mean, for all practical purposes, their department is one employee less, but then they're not worried about doing all that, and they can do their other police functions that they do.
That they do.
I guess so, so for now, I guess if we keep working on the budget, I think, I know that some of the Commissioners may have some suggestions for the next meeting. You wanna have a meeting next week?
We have to, there's a public, the first public hearing on the tax rate is next Thursday.
Okay, I will tell you, I, I'm out of town from, from Thursday to the following Wednesday, so...
Yeah, we're meeting every week.
Yeah, y'all have it, no problemo.
Well, one of the, I'm gonna throw this out there, 'cause I need to, so we can start thinking about it. I know it's not, I mean, as far as balancing the budget and setting salaries with no tax increase, that's kinda where we're looking, correct, Judge?
Correct.
One thing that came up at Tuesday's discussions, when we were talking about how we, um, we've grown, there's more need for services, one, one thing that you said, Judge, that I really, it stayed with me, was we've grown in population, but we haven't grown in wealth.
In wealth, correct.
And so, one of the things I thought is, well, how do we fix that? How do we grow in wealth? And I know we've been talking about economic development, I know we've been talking about the possibility of SpaceX and all of that, we've talked about hotel motel tax, we've talked about different things, but one of the things that I think we probably need to consider is investing in ourselves, investing in our future. And so, just for thought and discussion as part of this budget, I would propose a one penny increase in tax, but being restricted to economic development, reinvesting in our county, not, not to, you know, give people raises, or not, for anything other than economic development. Because something that we don't have, a county of our size, is a department that does economic development, we don't have a plan, and, and to me, it kinda hit me Tuesday, when you said we haven't grown in wealth, that we don't concentrate efforts in that area. And so, with all these unfunded mandates that the state's handing down, that, you know, cuts we get at the federal level, if we don't start investing in ourselves, that wealth is never gonna go up. And so, I know that raising taxes isn't popular, but with the idea that that one penny is gonna be strictly restricted to economic development, to kinda like, you know, leveraging funds on a, a bond or something for roads and future and different things, I think in that spirit of that one penny, which really doesn't turn into a lot overall, but it, it will have a big impact on how we can start increasing that wealth that our county's lacking.
I think, I think it's, it's, it's a good idea to, to discuss it. I would not support that at this point without having a true plan, direction, what is it we were trying to appeal to? It's a good idea. I think we discuss it during the year, and, and if we can, we formulate it, or we implement it in the following budget year, depending what the situation is. I, I don't know exactly what, what the plan would be, I think, I think it would encompass hiring people that are experts in the field, we don't have people that are, that are analysts or economic development folks, and so it'd be setting up a whole new department, and that's gonna cost some money to do.
Well, if I may, Judge, the idea, and that's what we're looking at, having some seed money, basically, but one of the things that we have to capitalize, and the reason I bring it up now, is we have this next session going into play. And if we're gonna look at maybe trying to get a, a statute that's conducive to our county with a motel, hotel, rental car, kinda like what Bear County has, we need to act now. And if we don't have this idea or plan in place, we'll end up having to wait another two years. The idea would be, after this year, if we get a statute passed, if we're able to start collecting money to fund itself, then, you know, our plan's already in place, and I know we don't have everything exactly laid out, but we can start formulating it, like you said, you hire experts in that area. I, I've studied the, the Bear County model quite a bit. David Garcia and I have met with the folks up there, and it's amazing what Bear County has done with their economic development, but what happened, and what I saw there, was that when Judge Wolf... that when Judge Wolf was with the city, the city had a great economic development plan, he went to the county and he kinda dragged that economic development, development plan over, and they've been very successful in what they're doing, so if we put it off, then we're two years behind, and that's why I wanted to bring it out, so we can maybe consider looking at it.
It's good for discussion.
With the restricted.
And I've spoken to folks in Bear County and in Austin about this, and, and it's a good modeled attempt to follow, but we're not Bear County. You know, they're, they're one of the largest counties in the state, I think they're number three or four, the, the driving engine there is San Antonio, and, and we don't have a driving engine city here, so it's gonna have to be the county. I think it's good for discussion, I, I don't think if, I don't think today would be, and I don't mean today, today, but I mean with this budget, raising taxes, because someone is going to not see that and have some concerns. I think, let, let the legislature take its course, pass the enacted legislation, we don't wait two years, we can pass that legislation now and have it affect, you know, do it next year if, if we can afford to do it. But I think it, I think it's a good initiative, but we're gonna have to find our, I said this the other day when in San Antonio, we have to find what, what is the niche that Cameron County wants to do, you know, we're not gonna be, you know, the Austins of the world, San Antonios of the world, we have to find our niche and working with other EDCs, you know, in Cameron County. Our, our main deal right now is infrastructure, and I think we've been very successful in creating, you know, and building out the infrastructure to attract that economic development. If we need to take it to another level, that's fine, I just don't, I as one just don't think it's the right time, I mean, today and raising the taxes by, by a penny. If we're gonna raise tax, I'd rather raise the taxes and use it to give employees a raise, if we could do that, but I'm not gonna support that, but this one is something that we talk about, I think we bring in some folks that, that can help us, that are free of charge hopefully, and give us, you know, give us some assistance and, and direction. But to raise taxes right now for that in hopes that three, four, five years from now may generate something, I'd much rather wait and discuss it during the year and not three, thirty days before we adopt a budget. I mean, that, those are my thoughts, I don't know what y'all wanna do, but Commissioner?
I'll consider it, I think there's some merits, excuse me, I think there's some merit to what you're saying. We probably have different directions for what that money should be used for, see, I think we should build an arena, I think we need to get the other, other cities involved and, and work together with the hotel motel, hotel motel tax in San Antonio is 16.75. Excuse my, in Houston is 17 cents percent, here with 13, in Cameron County, and most counties around the state are 13. The city of Dallas was, was allowed to collect two cents, I mean, the county of Dallas was allowed to collect two cents, hotel motel tax, plus two cents, uh, one cent on a special assessment that the legislature allowed them. The city of Houston has two cents for the county, I mean, Harris County, and two cents for a sports authority tax. So there's a lot of different ways that that money can be used, it's not just for economic development, it, well, an arena is a form, but the, the economic development takes many, many faces and many shapes, and I think it needs to be talked about, because I've done a lot of research myself this last year on this, that's why I know the numbers.
Why don't we do this, why don't, let's continue, I think it's a good point to bring up for, for discussion, once we get past this hurdle and then we start in October, November, start to talk about this, and putting a legislative plan together that we, that we do every two years and include that as part of our legislative agenda David, okay? But thank you, Commissioner.
One more, one more question, along the same lines, and we're talking about going to legislature, have we put money assigned for that, for this budget?
For travel?
This, this is the first that I, no.
No, you're talking about, but, but it's our normal travel that, that's already in there, but it's gonna be a little bit higher.
You normally do put a budget though, put a budget together for that?
We're just all going pizza bourbon.
So you'll have that ready for budget time, David? Yes, you will.
Okay, so then, we, we defer anything on employee raises at this point, I mean, I know that if we stop now, we know we can be, and I, and again, I'm gonna suggest that when we do, if we do the raises, we do it as a, as a one-shot deal, I know Martha, you've said that as long as we budget it, you know, we can do it, and we do it as a, as a supplemental, maybe the first paycheck in December or something. I still think that that's a good move because that way we're, we're not saddled with that in the next fiscal year, and we can, we can make some adjustments if we need to, but anyway, that's, that's for another day. But what else we can talk about this for now?
Can we reach consensus though on employee raises?
Well, I think right now what we have available is a 668-518, so at a minimum, we can do the, the $500 increase, that's correct?
Correct.
So we can reach a consensus on that number today, but that's as far as we can go.
At least we, you know.
At least we're, yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm ready to do that if, if the court wishes, and then if something happens in the next, in the next, at the next meeting and she finds another 300,000, that we can bump it up to the 750. But the point is that I wanna stay firm on having this as a, as a one, one-time supplement, as a one-time pay, so it doesn't go in, I think employees, the, the few that, that I've spoken with, would rather get, if they can, a lump sum amount versus, you know, if it, if it's $500, I already have it, you know, versus, versus, you know, $10 a pay period, they'd much rather get it all in, in one chunk, so.
Yeah, and for clarification, that, that dollar amount is for employees earning less than $51,000.
That's correct. I don't know if anyone has gone off center off of that.
No, I just, for clarification.
Okay.
And not including ones that received increases this year.
That's correct, that's correct, so Commissioner, do you wanna?
Weren't we gonna talk to the sheriff about getting some help with these numbers?
Yep, yeah, but we, we have those numbers, I think what he, well Pete's not here, I think it was found, they can, he cannot give it to the jailers, he can only give it to the sheriff's office or something, deputy, well, y'all talked about it, what, what was the number?
Pete's the one who spoke to the sheriff and I, I, you know, they were going back forth. The thing is, he can't use his federal funds for that, that, that's a given.
For what?
Well, for his deputies, he can.
For, he can't give raises using those funds, his state funds, he can. Now, the question is if he has it available or if he has other plans for it.
I thought, well, didn't we just do the federal with, with promoting the lieutenant to the captain?
Well, what you did is, in essence, you created another captain's position.
But we eliminated the lieutenant's position.
Correct, and that's allowable with the federal funds.
Oh.
Well, but instead of.
Because he was replacing a captain who was assigned to a task force.
Gotcha, okay.
But we didn't, we didn't charge the entire salary, we only charged 16.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, the law would allow us to charge the entire salary.
Yes.
So that would free up some money there for other raises on the other side, wouldn't it?
Yes, if, yes, it would.
Well, the problem that you have there is that it would be viewed as a supplanting issue because this position was already funded in general fund, and you're talking about moving it all to 900.
Wasn't it a new position? It's a new position, right?
Well, but it was.
Yeah, but the way it was approved then and now, you're saying, now.
Now, you have to pay for it at 900, you can't, you can't do that.
But, but isn't the whole idea of being able to pay for that captain because the captain is working already on, on task force? In other words, it's a replacement, we're not supplanting, we're replacing that captain's income or position because that captain's over there.
I think it's just the way, the way it was done, the way it was done, to go back and change it now.
Well, we, we could just undo it, say, "You know what, we rescind last week's, you know, Tuesday's order, bring us the new item next week and, oh, you want a new captain? Have you paid entirely out of forfeiture?"
That, that can't be a condition.
Well, then we don't have money to fund it, we can't give you a position.
Well, the budget does have to be approved by the court, so the court has the deal that, I mean, does have the, the courts that they don't have to approve it.
Well, I think that Pete talked to the sheriff, right?
How much will he come to the table with, or does he not want his employees to get raised?
Well, he cannot cover the jailers and any other employees, he can only cover deputies.
He can cover deputies, okay?
And didn't, didn't the deputies already get something?
Well, but we don't have to give deputy raises if he can.
That's true.
I mean, it's, it's, it's principles of accounting, right Martha?
The deputies are already excluded because they received an increase this year.
All of them?
All of them.
And, and there's, there's also some, in the local government code, there's some issue about you can't treat county employees different, you know, I mean, they all have to be treated equally and the same, I know, we've come across that issue with grant fundings when the court will approve a salary increase for county employees and there was employees that were, that were being paid strictly by a grant.
We have to match?
The, the general fund has to pay it because these people are in essence county employees, the fact that they're paid by a grant and the grant only pays X amount, the general fund has to kick in whatever percentage of an increase they do, so you also have to take that into consideration.
Well, but, I mean, we have a lot of counties' employees that have the same job, they get paid different, I mean, aren't we treating them differently? So how much can we get Pete? I mean, can he put money into other stuff that we're funding out of general fund?
Well, I talked to him about, you know, switching money around, you know, state, between the state and the federal forfeiture funds, but he said he already had committed that state money and, you know, his commitment couldn't be done utilizing the, the federal forfeiture funds, but, I mean, I can continue the dialogue with him.
Is it futile?
Very kindly, what was that?
Is it futile? Well, I mean, we've, we've gotta think outside the box here, and if he's got $7 million sitting over there.
But the majority of it is in the federal forfeiture funds.
Well, I understand, but that federal forfeiture money came from our employees that were general fund employees working and getting that money, right? So when they want vehicles or SUVs or whatever it is, instead of looking at our, you know, general fund budget to pay for all that stuff, maybe we can save the money there and him use forfeiture money for that, which would free up money to use somewhere else.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what other expense or what other eligible expenses within this general fund budget that, that he can utilize the forfeiture funds.
Can you look at that Martha, to see if there's anything that, I don't wanna say toys, but things that aren't as necessary?
It can be used for technology, for equipment, for CI payments, for overtime, so long as it's law enforcement related, I, I understand what you're saying Commissioner, but the usage of those funds are, they have to be, they are at his discretion, and you can't, as a court, as a county, you can't say, "Well, I give you 150,000 to, for, for fuel, and this year I'm not gonna fund your fuel because you have drug forfeiture money." This court can't, because it's looked at as a supplanting and it can't be done like that.
Well, we, we won't do that, but we could say, "You know what, Sheriff, we need to come up with another 600,000 so that all employees can get a raise, so we're gonna have to cut your budget by 600 in the general fund, where do you wanna cut it?" And then he could say, kinda like the DA's office said, "We want, we'll go ahead and put in an extra 200,000 so our employees can be paid at a higher wage," I mean.
I will tell you this, that officially on the record, you cannot do that.
Cannot.
You cannot put it on your.
We cannot select.
You cannot require.
But we can't cut the budget?
No, not for law enforcement.
Usage, uses, the usage of drug forfeiture, of forfeiture funds are at his discretion.
No, no, I'm, we're not saying he has to use it.
I understand, but in the context that you're saying is, you cannot do that.
You cannot, you cannot supplement his budget with forfeiture funds.
Well, we don't wanna supplement his budget.
If you're gonna cut his budget so that it forces him to try to use it, then that, you can't do that.
Well, no, but let's, let's just say there's things in his budget that may not be necessary. We can't cut those?
If you, if you feel that there are things in his budget that he doesn't need or that aren't necessary, then that's a Commissioner's court decision.
Right, and then if he feels they're necessary and says, "You know what, I want those, I'll use forfeiture money," he can't do that?
Yes, he can.
If he wants to.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, let's analyze the budget and see if there's things in there that aren't really necessary, and if there's things in there, then maybe we can cut there to get to this 900,000.
Well, then you do it to all departments.
Right.
Yeah, that's the thing.
You just can't selective arbitrarily select the department.
Well, no, it's, they're the largest department, that's why I say them, but yeah, we can do it across the board.
Well, other people don't have forfeiture funds aside from the DA's office.
And that's, and that's, and that's the exact issue right there, because you cannot selectively, "Well, you have drug forfeiture funds, so we're gonna go see what you don't need because you know you can put it in," well, then you go to every single elected official and you don't need it, well, then they have no way to supplement it. That's, that's the, that's the problem, I mean, I, I think, I think we're going down a path that really it may be illegal.
I think we need to have him cooperate with us on what he can do, and I think he expressed a willingness to do that.
Yeah, and I don't think he has a problem doing that.
He doesn't have a problem with that.
I just need to continue the dialogue and see what, what we can reach out that.
The number that, yeah, he said that he would cooperate within the parameters of what he can do with those monies, so that's not the issue, so if he does do that, whatever he can do, you don't have a numbers to, to what that number, that one, what you have is the, as the raises, you don't have that number there, right?
No, it's, it's not.
Okay.
Pete, have we asked you to also contact the DA's office?
Other than the, the $200,000.
And they've already agreed to that?
They have not agreed, rather, it is that reduction has been done in the salary budget as filed, so in essence, the salary budget has been reduced by 200,000.
The salaries or the slots?
The, the funding, the total.
Yeah, total salaries and slots, we don't know what slots would be eliminated at this point, it's just what's budgeted for salaries has been reduced by 200,000.
Okay, so who will make that determination, he will before the budget starts or us?
Well, we'll send them the salary schedules and, and let them know this is the amount you have available in your overall budget, tell us what you wanna reduce.
Okay, all right, so we're not ready for that yet, other than we can commit, I believe as a court, to do right now a minimum of $500. Now, if we're gonna do that, then.
So just pull that out, okay, so that we won't find a way to spend it somewhere else.
Well, once you do that, you've only got about 20,000, $24,000 left, of that 628 less the 604, and I'm assuming that we fund all of it, because if, what I'm hearing is that the deputies are not eligible because they got raises already, you can't use these, these fund 90, 900 monies, drug forfeiture monies for the jailers, correct?
Not the better ones, no.
Right.
He has state money though.
Correct, but, but what he told Pete, I understand, is that he.
He already had that money committed.
He has that committed for something else, and I guess I'll say, part of that commitment is he plans on giving the deputies the same supplement next year that he gave them this year.
Well, couldn't he use federal money to do that next year?
No.
He can't?
The only way that, it's not the whether he could use federal money, he'd have to restructure the usage of the funds that he's planning to use.
But that's a law enforcement purpose on the deputy's side.
With the federal, you can't give raises.
Right.
He would have to.
Yeah, you can't, you can't just give them a raise, I mean, if he was to, no, actually he can't, he can't just give raises.
Well, no, but what he could do is say, "Okay, in my budget, I've got so much for these vehicles, I'm gonna get rid of that budget item, use my federal money to get these special vehicles with new computers or whatever, and that money reassigned."
Yeah, but he could, but that's not in his budget, we don't, yeah, we don't budget equipment within the budget, that gets done.
Is there anything in his budget that he could reclassify on his own?
Electricity, utilities.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, you know, if, if it's possible, if you can look at those things, then that state forfeiture money is available, you know, give him a way to use his federal money on the plan.
What, what he has, what he has done is, is this, he's, he has shifted, he had operational, an operational budget within his regular forfeiture fund, which was fuel, vehicle repairs for, you know, their investigative uses or their, their seized and awarded vehicles and, and additional equipment that they purchased, he shifted it from his state funds to his federal funds because that is allowable, it's part of his regular operations, but those were already being paid out of his forfeiture funds, they, they were never part of the general fund budget, that, that's separate and aside that he's already paying for out of there.
I think what we have found, or at least I have found, that the sheriff for the most part is very cooperative when it comes to, you know, using federal monies or state monies, drug forfeiture to, not supplement, but to, to utilize those versus general fund money, so I think if there's a way to do it, I think he'll do it, I think he committed that, that there's a legal way that, that he can do this, he stands ready to do it. But you're gonna find that it's not that much money when it comes to the salaries because the lion's share is already be given raises, the jailers, you know, he can't use the money for the jailers, so it leaves really hardly anybody, so I think we need to move forward. for the jailers, so it leaves really hardly anybody, so I think we need to move forward and assume that at a minimum it's going to be the five hundred dollar raise at the six oh-four. If something changes in the next couple of weeks, then we can, you know, we can up it depending on what the situation is. And just keep working with the sheriff and see, see if you come up with a, with a number, but that number's got to come off here.
Judge, but I think that if you're using state forfeiture monies, and I looked at this with Pete yesterday, the statute just says employees of the law enforcement agency.
The state?
The state, that's what I'm saying, state. No, yeah, the state.
And I think what he said was that those state forfeiture monies were already committed to something else, so it's not available.
What can he possibly consider recommitting, you know, federal for state and, you know, and those are the discussions you need to have, you know?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what it is that they're committed for.
And he's, you know, the sheriff, we don't do it in a confrontational mode, is usually very cooperative with us.
Right.
I mean, if we get into confrontation with him, we might as well just go home.
No, and I'm not saying get in a confrontation with him, I'm saying come up with ideas and ways to show him how we can, you know, best leverage that federal money where we can. But, oh, you're right, you get a lot more with honey than you do with a swatter.
One other thing that has been...
Yeah, but with a swatter you kill them.
Not always.
One other thing that has been mentioned is, do we have any positions where people are like of retirement age that we could look at through attrition, not feeling?
Age discrimination?
Just about everybody on this commission is close to retirement age.
And I'm talking, I'm talking about considering an incentive for people, I mean, I've seen the university locally, the university in Edburg, there's been a number of entities...
Harlingen School District did that.
The Harlingen School District, the Brownsville School District, you know, they're offering an incentive to allow people to enjoy their retirement years earlier than they normally would have.
And then to eliminate the slot?
And then bring them back at a lower paying if you need to...
Or eliminate it, one or the other.
Or eliminate it.
Yeah, we haven't looked at that, and yeah, legal, yeah, legal will have to look at that, because, you know, county's a little bit different, and so as far as giving someone an incentive to retire, I'm not sure.
Well, I know that there's counties that have a mandatory retirement age. How do they get around the...
We do not.
No, 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 I'm saying, there's counties that have mandatory retirement ages, you know, and I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying there evidently is ways that are lawful to do those things.
Right.
And I'm not talking about elected officials, Mr. Joe...
But I think that...
He's only forty-one.
It's, it's good for discussion, but it, you know, it's not going to help us fix this, because I don't think you can come up with an answer, you know, in thirty days, so, but I think it's like, like the economic development one and some of the other issues, those are good for discussion after we adopt this budget, and we start soon, so we're prepared, better prepared for the next budget.
I think it needs to be part of this budget because if we don't start action, it'll never happen.
No, that's what I'm saying, but I'm saying they're not going to have a number to book today or before the end of the budget for the mandatory retirement and, you know, paying out of, I don't think you can do it. I don't think you can pay people, at least in county government, to retire, I don't think.
We'd have to check.
But we'll check with legal, I mean, and then hopefully...
Yeah, it hasn't come up, so.
You know, five hundred people want to retire, but then where are you, again, you got the money to pay them off, still a money issue.
You eliminate the position.
Well...
That's how you finally get sent.
Yeah, you eliminate the position.
Well, that's, that's going to take a lot of study, something that we're not going to be able to do in the next three weeks.
But we can't target it based on the aged individuals, because then we have a great lawsuit coming at us.
It's got to be what?
It has to be a voluntary.
Right.
It would have to be a voluntary type of thing.
Right.
It's not done as a mandatory, it's done as a voluntary.
A voluntary out.
Right.
Okay. What else on that, y'all are, y'all are cool?
That's it for today.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge the discussion?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, signed by Commissioner Benavides, law in favor, seen by saying aye, any opposed, out of carries, out of me. Consideration, authorization, only public hearing regarding the setting of elected official salaries?
Can we ask Javier one question before we move on?
Yeah, Javier.
You understood exactly where we are.
We clarified it, right?
Yes.
You know the direction?
Well, the next item is when you actually set them. Right now this is just a public hearing for the public to...
Okay, do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
No move.
By Commissioner Hernandez, signed by Commissioner Benavides, law in favor, seen by saying aye, any opposed, out of carries. We are in a public hearing regarding the setting of elected official salaries. If anybody's wishing to discuss that, I'll tell you what my position is and continue being, that I will not support a raise to any elected official that's higher than what we're giving employees, whether it's five hundred, seven fifty, or a thousand. Secondly, a question, when we were doing this fifty-one thousand or over issue, no employee making over fifty-one thousand would get a raise, was it the court's intent to include elected officials that were making in excess of fifty-one thousand as well, treating them like employees or not?
That was my intent, I don't know what the rest of the intent was.
Okay, I just want to know, because that would be, to me, again, I mean...
Excluding Commissioners Court and the judge.
Yeah, we do not, because we're over that, just about.
We don't make over fifty, do we?
No.
No, but I think the, just so we're clear, any raise excludes members of the commission.
Right.
Right, so anyway, so I guess Mike was, the intent of thing of Commissioner Gatsa when he, when he made that motion and we all approved it, was to exclude elected officials that were also making over the fifty-one thousand dollar threshold.
That was my intent.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you again, just trying to treat employees, because elected officials are employees, and just treating them all the same. So there is a public hearing, anybody wish to make comment on, during this public hearing? Teresa, and just introduce yourself please when you, and keep your comments if you can to forty-five minutes or less. Three minutes.
Good morning, everybody, thank you. My name is Teresa Saldivar, I'm a citizen here in Brownsville and of the county. I agree with Judge Casco's, I don't think this is the time to give people raises. I'm also a little concerned with the way you guys structure raises, it doesn't seem to be a structure, it just seems to be, you know, it's time to give people a raise or somebody comes and asks for a raise. The way I look at, at paying salaries is you have a starting point and an ending point for a position, and in between there you have the opportunity based on your merits of your job quality, performance, attendance, and all those standard things. That's my perspective when I look at, when you guys talk about money coming from the private sector, that's how it's set up, not everybody receives the same exact amount of money that the next person receives because it's, you have a starting point, you have seniority, you have your job quality, you know, I'm sure you guys are all aware of those things. But anyway, that's my perspective, I stand with the judge, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Anybody else?
Good morning, Commissioners Court, the name is Letizia Perez-Garcoria, and I'm glad to hear that the Commissioners, the Commissioners Court is not included in the raise, however, there are concerns nonetheless. Why are we talking about a raise in the first place? Number one. Number two, raises should be given to those who merit raises. We, you don't just ballpark everybody and say, "You know what, everybody needs a raise because, you know, we really need it, we all need money." But you know what, it requires work and dedication and conviction and ability and concern and really getting down to the nitty gritty of what's wrong with this, with this county. I hear we need economic development at taxpayers' expense? Or should we be looking at other resources? Find resources, there are resources, but you know what, you need somebody who's concerned about it and say, "You know what, just like the tax, task forces for something else, then task force for that too, because yes, we need it, but don't take it out of the taxpayer that doesn't have it. We're in a real rough boat and so are you. You have a challenge, a very deep challenge, but you know, talking about raises at this, at this particular time is not the very best of ideas, but unfortunately, we're back to the same thing. I'm seeing, as I'm hearing and I'm sitting right there, I'm seeing a reactionary commission. I'd like to see a proactive commission, somebody who gets there and says, "You know what, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and I'm going to, this is what I talked about last year and the year before last and the year..." In the same boat with the same conversation? Reactive instead of proactive? I don't understand it. We have educated people up here, we have people with degrees, we have people with businesses, we have people with all kinds of goodies in their, in their resume, but what are we doing? We have challenges, and I know you have challenges, and your challenges are our challenges, but to really put it all in one basket and say raises, let's, let's all do it because it's the thing to do, well, I don't think it's a thing to do, and if you want an economic development, I'm for it. I want this town to prosper, I want this county to prosper. I'd like to see some money coming in, we're all going to benefit, but let's think about it, and don't put it on the taxpayers' back, because let's get creative, I say that, creativity brings a lot of change. Minds getting together brings a lot of change, and certainly the right direction for this commission to take, it's all in every direction. We need to come together, it needs to be a consensus, and not a consensus of, "I'm the diva and you're not," no, it needs to be a consensus of proactive commission duties and merits and raises only on merits only, that's my condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And I'll respond to some of these concerns after everyone's done.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge, I've been hearing exactly the same story.
Just your name, just your name for the record.
Mary Ray, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Mary.
Mary Ray. I'm not here necessarily to repeat what Teresa and Leti already said, I think we all are aware of what's going on. This is not the time for raises for anyone, period. And another thing that I really like to bring to your attention is when we're speaking, when the public is speaking, we really would like to have the attention of all of you, not just a few of you. I see Commissioner Hernandez reading something and I see Commissioner Sanchez speaking to someone in the back of the person that's speaking, that is totally and absolutely disrespectful, and I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Let me address some of the concerns, to answer some of the questions. Let me start off with Ms. Garcia, because she has raised some of these issues before, and I remember a few years ago, one of her concerns was that of the jailers and the overtime and go cut the budget, so I welcomed her. I welcomed her to go to the jail and go check it out and look at where the inefficiencies were, and, you know, our budget is posted on the website, and, and she comes back and she wanted to give people raises. And I remember that, and I appreciated that, I'm sure the jailers did too, so it's real easy for, for the public, and we welcome the public at every meeting, you know, I think that we're a little bit different in terms of access and, you know, your public comments are televised and we give you whatever time is necessary, you know, within reason. For those of y'all that have followed what we've done in the last several years, is that, you know, I don't believe in raising taxes to give raises, I've made that comment before. Last year we raised taxes to accommodate a bond issue, you were privy to a lot of the conversation this morning about the budget, and it's real easy to say, "We're going to roll up your sleeves and go do this and go do that," and you know what, if you want to do that, you know, I think it's wonderful, but you run for public office, so you see really what's going on, and it's not as easy. I think Commissioner Sanchez mentioned, when he was a Justice of the Peace, you know, he was looking at it from, from his perspective, and he gets here and obviously it's a different Everybody on the court works, you know, pretty hard, you know, and there's a lot, you were right, Leti, there's a lot of challenges, and it's really easy to say, "Go and do this, go and do that," but we're dealing with thirty-plus elected officials. A lot of the, everything that we do is, is subject to, in compliance with state law. There's a lot of things that, that we cannot do that cities can do, school districts can do, we are, we are bound by what state law says. If you've listened over the last budget hearings, you're fine, that we're struggling, and the consensus of this court this year was to stay the course in regards to the tax rate. Now, that does not mean that taxes are not going to go up, we have to be fair that for those people that appraised values went up, their taxes are going to go up. So if you've noticed what I've said, I didn't say we're not going to raise taxes, I've been very specific in saying we are not going to raise the tax rate, and I think everyone is holding to that. Economic development, I think it's a great idea, I think those are the types of innovations that we want to hear, I think that we should have some, some good dialogue, but I agree with you, I won't support the raising of a tax today to fund something without legislatively knowing what's going to happen. Commissioner Hernandez has got some thoughts, we've tried the arena issue a few years ago, we got a lot of municipalities and school districts on board to do it, but, you know, a couple of major players did not want to come on board, maybe we can reach them again. One of the issues we talked about as well was that, yeah, everybody talks about the county growing, inmate population growing, but the wealth isn't growing, our tax base isn't growing, and then when, when business and industries do come here, you know, they're lured by the incentives that are provided by different entities, then they go belly up after a while. So, you know, I think that economic development is something that we can consider, that's not a primary function of county government, but it can be a function. But I think what we're doing in terms of infrastructure, all the construction you see along the highways and, and from here to, you know, to Neises County are the endeavors of not only this commission, but the Regional Mobility Authority and the taxpayers. So there's a lot of things going on that normally do not get talked about, but I believe that everyone in this commission works hard. I applaud the commission, the commissioners that are here now and the ones that I've served in the past for agreeing not to take any compensation, not just for four years like most of the county employees, but since I've been county judge, this court has never taken a raise. For the same thing that Commissioner Gatsa mentioned, I've mentioned it, that, you know, when people run for office, they know what the job pays. If they can find a job that's going to pay them that or better, go find it. That's, but that's part of the public service that, that I believe that you, that you sign up for. So, trust me, I wish, I wish you all would come to the meetings more often. It's always good to see you, but I always see you come budget time, you know that, and I think it, you're, I want you to come, we want the public to be aware of what we're doing, and again, you want to roll up, you want us to roll up your sleeves, well then you roll up your sleeves, and you do it during the year, not just come budget time when there's a potential tax increase coming up. Every member of this court, I know that, you know, welcomes, you know, positive comments, innovative comments, not negative, we hear a lot of negativity, but there's a lot of positive things that are going on in this county. As far as the raises and the merit, we tried to do this some years back, it's been tried before, develop a salary matrix, I see Adora in the audience, and her office was, was one of the first ones that provided salary matrices and what we wanted to do, and some departments did not, some did, there is a disparity between a clerk in one office and a clerk in another office, that's the way this system has been for decades, and it's very hard to try to change it. Once you lock into a merit pay increase, then you're, you're committed to doing that every year, and here we're struggling to give five hundred dollars. There's got to be a better way, and I'm sure that at some point we will find a better way. When we talk about equalizing of salaries, it always goes up, never comes down, so we always equalize up, we never equalize down, but that's just the nature of the business that we're in. But sincerely, I appreciate y'all being here, and I wish you would come to visit, you know, more often. I can't offer you coffee, but, you know, you'll have a chair to sit on, but thank you. Joe?
Thank you Judge, I'm glad that you ladies are here, and like Judge said, wish more people would come out here and say their piece, you know. I get up every morning and roll up my sleeves and make sure that our operation runs like clock, and if you've ever been to the county clerk's office, you will find that you get good service, you will find that you get good service. I'll challenge any department, any department who gets better service. We also have a grading system where you as a citizen can come in and grade our operation, and I return all calls, all calls. I have, you county commissioners have sometimes called me... I have, U-County Commissioners have sometimes called me at 10 o'clock at night that somebody needs a merit license, and we get it for them. We've had people call us on weekends. We don't call 24 hours a day. Four years ago, the judge asked us to tighten our belt. We did, we did. It couldn't have been done just by the county commissioners asking us. We cut our budgets to the bone. And that's why we're in the shape that we are right now, that we'd be able to give some pay raises. The only thing that I ask when they say about equalization of pay, that you be fair, that you be fair. Six years ago, the tax collector and ourselves, we're at the same pay level. The last time we got a raise, he got an $8,200 pay increase, and we only got a $1,000 raise. And that's a little bit unfair. And that's why I'm here. Even with what you suggested that we get, I think it's a little bit over $2,000. They don't even bring us close to what our tax collector gets. But we will be satisfied, because, like I say, every morning, we roll up our sleeves and come in and do the work that you people expect from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Any other public comment?
Judge, just one comment, and this is more of just information purposes. The only thing that I want to say is that, out of all the counties between Cameron County and El Paso, along the border, which are all in the same economic straits for the most part, you know, they're all poor counties, they all have populations that are not, you know, making the medium incomes of over $40,000 to $50,000 a year like counties up north of us. You know, out of all these counties, there's only one county that has a lower tax rate by very little than we do, and that is El Paso County. All of the other counties, beginning with our neighbors to the west, have tax rates that range from 10 to 12 to 13 cents higher than we do. So, you know, even though the bridge system doesn't produce what it used to produce, it still subsidizes our tax rate. So, again, I've mentioned that every year, I think, since I've been on the commission, you know, I want to give thanks to the foresight that previous commissioners had and current commissioners that are still exploring the possibilities of bridge systems to help, not only for growth and economy, but also for subsidizing. Because at the end of the day, what the bridge system does for the county is it subsidizes our tax rate.
How much now, you figure, about a nickel? Six cents?
Yeah, five.
About a nickel?
Five to six cents.
So if they went for the bridge system, we'd be at 43, 44 cents.
We'd have to be even higher. So, in exploring economic possibilities, I know that we have, you know, right now, we have improvement going on at the Veterans Bridge that will allow for more economic possibilities with the doubling of the size of that bridge. We have under consideration, discussion, and a large commitment from the county, the development of the Florida Mayo Bridge. Some people think that you're crazy for even considering those things. But I think that, as you brought up, Letty, we're looking at the future, and we're looking at how we can invest as little as we can afford today to be able to have that. 20 years from now, hopefully, some of the commissioners will have their tax rate subsidized, maybe 10 to 15 cents, which is less of a burden to the local taxpayer here because of the bridge crossings. So we are, Commissioner Sanchez, doing some economic development. Maybe not per se economic development, you know, where we have a department and do all these things, but we are doing economic development. You know, the county committed to transportation projects, as the judge alluded to. All these transportation projects are being done with the belief, and with draft market analysis studies having been done that show that in the next 30 to 40 years, we can expect to see sizable economic development occurring along these new routes. So there is an impetus and an effort to do those things. I would definitely support a venue-added tax system or statute that we could get passed legislatively to allow us to not have our citizens strive or idalo for every event to go see whoever it might be next that they have. But their venues are well attended. If you've been to any of them, you find a lot of people from Cameron County there. So we need to look at that possibility. We've discussed that possibility, but we need to do it, again, as you say, with a venue-added type tax associated with it that wouldn't tax the local taxpayer, but would be paid for by those people choosing to visit that particular activity. So, you know, we are looking at these things. We've discussed, I think David Garcia was part of a group, and is still part of a group, that has been talking about the venue-added tax now for at least one previous legislative session. Our senators and representatives have been ready to help us if the other economic engines of our county come together with the project that we can all agree on. And that's what we've got to work on. So, you know, there are a lot of things going on, you know, and a lot of them come about because of public comments that we hear, about personal conversations that we have with people, and because of the discussions that we have here amongst each other. You know, I mean, I think the public involvement, you know, I mean, that's always where the rubber meets the road, as far as I'm concerned. And it's helpful to me to get reinforced or told, you know, you need to look at a different avenue. So, just some thoughts.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Regarding that niche that Judge Casco was talking about, I think it's important to realize who we are, where we are, and what we should be doing. The niche in this instance is your county, and your county is rich in history. We're missing the boat. We're missing the boat. You are the most historic city in the whole, practically the state, and you're sitting under a rock, wondering, "Where should I go? What should I do?" Well, you're sitting on it. You're history. But, you know, explode it. Look what San Antonio does with it. That beautiful museum, the historical, the Latin American. What are we doing here? You're the richest, richest city in the whole state, and you're sitting under a rock. I've said it to the city commission, now I'm saying it to you. I mean, it's not right. This is not a dream. This is reality. Explode it. Use it. I mean, I'm seeing trolleys down Main Street. I'm seeing people, you know, visitors coming over here, "Oh, this is this, happened here, and this was the home of I don't know who, and this was the home of..." And let's not just explode, showcase the Anglo names. I want to see Latino names out there. Poor houses, poor people that have really gone the extra mile just for what? To make a better city, to make a better family, to make a better community. This is what we need. This is your niche. You need to not, you need to explode it. Start thinking big. Start getting and say, "You know what? Ya nos cansamos de la pobreza. I'm sorry. We're going to think outside the box, and we're going to explode this thing, and let's find out how many creative minds we can have, and where we're going to get the funding, or we're going to get the volunteers, or we're going to get..." Muchas cosas can happen in this county. Like I'm saying, all of these things that are happening, and I'm hearing from you all, how about mentoring? How about getting people interning from the universities? How about doing something to help yourself? Don't just think, "How can we pay this one to do this?" There's people that are retired that would love to help.
Well, that's why it's important to study this economic development issue. And the reason that I asked what is our niche, it was a rhetorical question. You know, I think we have two, and I think you're right. I think we are the most historical city slash county in the state, second, not even second to San Antonio. I think we've got more historical buildings. I think the birding, the bird watchers that come down to the county, I'm looking about the county, not just Brownsville. Cameron County is one of the best birding locations that we have. When I say niche, you know, I don't want to copy anybody, because San Antonio is San Antonio, and they've got a lot of attractions. They're one of the largest counties. Their population base is three or four times larger than ours. You're right. I mean, but just to buy a simple historical building for us is challenging, and we're trying to do that, because you're going to find that very few individuals, very few, can take a building and restore it. I know what the cost of restoration of a historical house is. It's very costly, but we've tried to do that. So that's why I think it's important, if and when we get to that point about economic development, it covers a lot, a whole lot. And whether it's bringing a caterpillar plant or a manufacturing plant, I mean, we have to find the niche that we want to do and be, and do it as best as we can so that people want to come down.
And there needs to be more than one niche, per se. You know, and I'll give you one example. I spent two hours yesterday with a gentleman in Arroyo City. And most of us think as a Arroyo City, you know, everybody goes to retire there. Okay. Well, I spent two hours with this gentleman, and he says, he is a fishing captain and takes people out fishing. And I didn't think much of, I mean, there's a lot of fishing captains, you know, I mean, they're all over, you know. I mean, I've used one before. But then he says, you know, "Do you realize?", you know, and then there were two men coming in to go fishing today. And they call, they call the Laguna Madre area the saltwater fly-fishing capital of the world. There is no other place in the world, according to world fishermen, you know, that spend their time fishing like the Laguna Madre area is. And, you know, fly-fishing is something that we read about and see in Alaska, and streams up in the north, and all these things. And they say, "No." You know, Arroyo City is the saltwater fly-fishing capital of the world. And they started mentioning names of individuals that are coming down to do this. And the individuals coming down to do this sport activity, which do nothing more than spend money in our county, you know, are people that are extremely well-respected in the industry, whether it be making equipment or whatever. They're out here fishing in our area, you know. And I says, "Well, how come I've never read about this or seen this?" And the gentleman continues to tell me that he manufactures these things, and they're manufactured in Thailand. I know somebody says, "Export, import." But he manufactures this product in Thailand, distributes the products worldwide, but chooses to buy a residence and make a living and enjoy bringing people to this fishing spot. You know, I mean, we have the island, which is a jewel, which is a destination place, but we need to somehow help these other folks promote and allow us to be known for other things than just, you know, the River Walk, you say, or, you know, Six Flags or whatever. There's a lot of activities, you know, people that, he starts telling me that people that he sees there are people that are spending, you know, they spend a lot, I mean, they fly in for a two-day fishing trip. They spend money flying in, renting a car, getting there, and it's not cheap to do these things, you know. And then they stop at places to get ready. So there's a whole lot of niches that need to be explored by us and supported.
And I would like one of those niches to be history, because you are the richest city in Texas, and you just need to really, really tap into that and just make it happen.
Well, that's part of the discussions that we will have this coming fiscal year, as we talk about development and history, and really what the role of county government is. And I think it's important to bring the municipalities, you know, in there so we're not, you know, competing for the same thing or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of competition among cities, and I think we need to get past the point that, even in South Texas, that we're competing with McAllen. You know, our competitors are global. You know, to try to bring folks down, you know, we're doing, I'm doing some, taking some interviews and some public hearings on the impact of the Panama Canal. And the ports are realizing, "Hey, our competition is not Houston." And David's been with me at these meetings, "It's not the Port of Houston or Port of Corpus Christi. It's other countries, other nations, other states." And that's, we have to get away from that mindset. So we'll just continue working with it. So, thank you, Letty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
For a near $475,000, $5,000.
Just round.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on, you mentioned getting, being creative, and that you're looking at other ways of bringing in, generating revenue and so forth. I think I had written to you, Judge, regarding Isla Blanca, where we charge visitors during the high-peak season, tour seasons, a dollar more than we charge our county residents. Where I came from, we had a community park with a pool, and if you showed your ID and you were a resident of the town, you paid 50 cents. If you showed an ID, and you always had to show an ID, and it's so that you lived in the town next door, then you paid a dollar. And that was the community's way of dealing with the, over, people coming from out of area, from outside of town, and using their facilities, and being able to sustain those facilities and the extra maintenance that would be needed, you know, with extra people using the services. So I had suggested we do the similar for Isla Blanca during the peak tourist seasons. And I don't think people would mind. They're going to come here regardless. They're going to use Isla Blanca, they're going to use that other access area that we have to pay in to go. And additionally, I'd like to see, moving over towards what Mr. Commissioner Sanchez was talking about, his perspective, and now realizing that delaying a case would, does in fact create more costs. And so I hope that the new DA coming in will take that to heart and require the DA's department to run more efficiently, and reduce time so that, you know, because the budget's all tied in. It's all money that's all tied in, and you have to save from here, and borrow from there, and take from there. And if everybody, like you say, does their part, and you get creative, and do all these little things, they add up to major savings or raises. And then it's not such a shock for the public to say, "Yeah, okay, you know, you guys need a raise, what have you." Also, on merit raises in the private sector, if the company's not doing good, nobody gets a merit raise. You do get a cost of living increase, which is the standard COLA for national, 3%. I don't know if they've raised it lately, but that's how it was done. And Commissioner Garza, I like the bridge, Florida Mayo Bridge. Our family likes that idea. We recognize the disaster. It would, if something seriously happened on the island with the traffic during peak seasons, you can't get ambulances across the bridge timely. You have to use flight light, the helicopters, all those things. So the bridge would be a great asset, but on the flip side of that, it would affect the fishing season because the waters would be disturbed. So we'd have to take all of that into consideration and realize that we would see some downturns, even though, because progress is happening. So even though everything comes together, and they do all affect each other.
Thank you, Teresa.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Just for clarification, the Florida Mayo Bridge is not the Causeway Bridge. The Causeway is another one. Florida Mayo is the extension of Alton Glor as you go towards Mexico.
We're doing that one also.
Of course, we may call that new Causeway Florida Mayo, but...
Also, for clarification, I didn't say the DA was the one delaying. It was on the defense side. Right.
Right.
Okay.
But I think that it's important, in the light of the spirit of elections coming up, that when these candidates talk to people, lay people out, that those questions be asked of them. You know, they're asking for our support, and we need to know where they stand on this issue.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I wanted to tell you why I think our people deserve a raise. First of all, we're staying within the budget that we have. We're not going to raise the property tax at all. So it only will affect you if your value has gone up on your house, and that yet take up with the appraisal district. Since I've been here, we've worked very hard as a team, and I've always agreed on all the issues. But I wanted just a couple of things... But I, I wanted just, just a couple of things that I know, that I've been involved in last year and, and things that we're working on. And I think the first one we did, the hardest one I did was last year. That's when we eliminated some of the constables and JP positions and put more work on the other ones. But, the same time, it costs less money to op, you know, we have less, we have too many in one area and not enough. I can tell you right now, in Brownsville alone, we have two JPs. They serve a hundred thousand people, I mean, excuse me.
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand people. So, JPs in Brownsville serve half the county needs, yet there's two in Brownsville and seven spread out among the county. So, that's a little bit unbalanced. It's a big, it's a big burden for the ones here. Well.
And JP's.
Yes, and we're hoping, I'm hoping to add a JP three in Brownsville, which I'll bring up next week. Okay. The other thing, just, just quickly, uh, I don't wanna take a lot of time. We're adding parking lots on this side of the building, redoing this old building called the La Sesta Building. The buildings behind you are BISD. We're doing a public-public partnership with them to take that over because we need more office space. Uh, they need breed elementaries on a very narrow road in Data Road. They need that road expanded, the sidewalks. I'm hoping to offset, they can offset their cost, might give it us the buildings and we do that. We get the buildings at a much better cost, no cost to taxpayers again. Okay? Uh, the I sixty-nine issue, the Commissioner Garza, the five-fifty express lanes that we have on, all of these expansions have been done for economic development, the future of this community. Uh, yes, I am working on trying to do, uh, an event center, a public-public partnership. There's a man that has offered, that's the same man that offered Judge Costco's thirty or forty acres on Highway one hundred a couple years ago, has come back, offered the land. How do we do it without raising taxes? That's the challenge. We're gonna work on it. It's a hard one. Um, we're building, we're trying to build a new animal shelter within, within our means without raising taxes. Uh, we implemented, or Tony Sagui, they implemented SCOTF law. And what SCOTF law did is if you owe, uh, old parking tickets and you go to renew your license plates, you're getting tagged. Now you have to pay them. And it's only fair because if you owe them, you should pay them. If everybody in this room pays them and, and that person in the back doesn't pay his tickets, well, then he has to get his license plates. So, that's brought in a ton of new money, not just to Cameron County, but all the entities. Harlingen, Sanito and Brownsville are singing songs about Tony now because he brought him so much money. All of a sudden, they're, they're got a, uh, uh, Harlingen gave a big raise to their employees because they had so much money come in. That's what Cameron County did for them. People don't know that. Uh, the space, well, you need to come to the meetings. The SpaceX, the, the SpaceX issue that, that we're working on so hard, the SpaceX issue, you know, I, I look long-term and I see added, if, if it comes through and hopefully it will, we'll have additional airlines, we'll have additional hotels. I, I see Isla Blanca turning into a destination with a high-rise hotel viewing south to see those launches once a month. I mean, there's so much potential that could happen down here. If, if everybody says that, I don't like this person, so I'm not, you know, we're all working in, in the same direction. Maybe not exactly the way everybody here would like it, but I think everybody here's on the same page and we're not always gonna agree. We know that. That's just part of, that's part of the political way we do things. But, hold, I'm not finished. Hold on, I'm almost finished.
I love the excitement.
The, and I, that's the way I did, I get. Uh, we don't always agree on the tollways. I know we've had some major disagreements, but you know what? We went, we worked through it and we go forward. The, the last thing I'll talk about, and I think it's very important because it goes back to, uh, Commissioner Sanchez, what he was talking about earlier and all of us agree, is trying to figure out a way to expand the jails, to bring the feds in, to release our facilities, to actually leave us money. We could actually make money on our jails, but that's a process. Again, nobody knows about this 'cause we, we don't have facts and figures yet. But there's a lot of stuff that we, we're doing as a county commissioners court to benefit all of you. And especially, that's why, and I want, and my last thing, I would say, that's why I support all these people out here as much as I can because they, they make all this happen. We don't, we come up with these great ideas, they do all the work and they're great employees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, it is, and that's, that's still a challenge that, that we continue to work on. Thank you. Anything, any other public comment? Uh, I know we got our swimming lanes a little bit here, but regarding setting of elected officials compensation.
I, I have...
Or, or public hearing. No, we, I think we're still in a public hearing.
Are we done?
Javier, you gonna get other?
Uh, I'll, I'll have a few things to say.
Well, go ahead.
Ladies, I apologize if I got up. I had a question on the document that had been handed. I thought some of the numbers were wrong. But I'm a parent and I'm able to multitask. I'm sure you know what that's like, uh, but if I offended you, I apologize. Didn't intend to do that. Um, economic development, and Ms. Garcia, I agree with you, we're rich in history. Uh, there's many things, many, many things that we can look at, uh, that we are unique. The fishing, our island, the, uh, the event center. Uh, the idea would be an event center slash conference center with shops and restaurants and, and an attraction that generates revenue daily, not just on event days. Um, the idea of, with along the infrastructure that's coming in, coming up with what are we gonna build along that infrastructure? Our port, we have the closest port to the Panama Canal that's under the, the expansion process right now. So, all these are things. We've got a rail bridge into Mexico that gives us direct access. We have so many things in place, but if we don't start moving forward, we're not gonna create that wealth that we need to. And we can talk about it for years, but until we put it in action, it doesn't happen. And all these things take money. And I know that it's never the right time to raise taxes, never. Nobody ever wants to raise taxes. But if one penny today, we add to this budget cycle and we dedicate all of it to economic development and our value goes up, it's possible that the tax rate can come down 'cause it's being shared by more people. But over the years, it hasn't been done. And so, there's always, well, we'll work on it, we'll talk about it, doesn't get done. It takes money to make it happen. And, and that's why I feel strongly, I mean, it's not the popular thing. You know, I'm sure the paper's gonna say, Commissioner Sanchez wants to raise taxes. And if I don't get re-elected, that's okay, I don't mind. I'm here to serve the people, you know? But one of the, the service that we have to give is how do we figure out fixing the problem? And, and the problem is, the reality, we have not grown in wealth. How do we change that? Well, there's, there's us doing it piecemeal or we hire experts. Uh, there's been a lot of competition among the cities. There's not a lot of cohesion. Everybody's pulling in different directions. And that's why I think it's essential and key that the county be the leader to bring everybody together and focus regionally. What can we do? What can make things happen for all of us? So, instead of fighting over, uh, where is the Bass Pro Shop gonna be? It can be, uh, Bass Pro Shop, how much are you willing to give us? Oh, 'cause Cabelas will give us this much. Make them fight over us, not us fight over them. But if we're not united, if we don't have a plan, it doesn't happen. And so, it's not popular, nobody ever wants to hear raising taxes. But that one penny will not have the significant impact on any one individual as the impact it'll have on our entire county, the benefits that it's gonna bring us. So, please consider that, uh, when you're considering everything we're doing. In reference to, um, salaries and being fair, it's exactly what Commissioner Hernandez said. We're not raising the tax rate to fund any of this. We're doing it within the budget. So, we're not raising your taxes to fund this. And that's why after I made it clear that, okay, we're gonna be able to figure out our budget without increasing the tax rate. And that's when I said, now let's consider one penny for economic development. 'Cause if we don't do it today, it's not gonna happen. I mean, we could talk about it for the next three or four years. It's not gonna happen. You gotta put your, your money there. And so, it, just let me briefly finish. Um, and with the raises, uh, to, to some of these officials on equalizing, you know, if we don't equalize and try to get an equal bar, then what have we done? Why has there been a disparity? You know, and we've done it at our expense. Like the judge says, he's not taking a raise since he took office. None of these commissioners have. If you go next door to Yagüe County, those commissioners make a hundred thousand dollars a year. And I'm not saying we need to earn that. A hundred and what?
I think it's a hundred and fifteen.
Well, what, they have like a ten thousand dollar car allowance and whatever, but you know, I'm not saying I wanna raise and I'm not here for the money, clearly. I'm, I'm here to serve as are, are the rest of us up here. But the fact that we're willing to forego that, even though the price of everything goes up, take that in consideration too. We're not ask, we're not doing it for us, we're doing it for them and you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Letty, real, real quick, we gotta move on 'cause we're running out of TV time. We already did.
Just to, to add on to that a little bit, it's not the fact that economic development isn't necessary. I think it really, really is, especially in the county. You need to get resource, you get, you need to get a tax base, you need to get something going and an attraction, yes. But how is it going to be presented? That's, that was my issue. Okay? If you're gonna present it because you're going to impose it, is a different thing? Or should the, should it be voted on? Because if you're gonna impose something to me that I'm not for, I don't want history or I don't want the fishing industry or whatever it is, what, what direction are you gonna take on that? That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. This is my issue, you know? Let, let, let's be, let's be, uh, real, um, uh, direct about it and have a plan. Don't just be nebulous and throw it out there. We're gonna get economic development, how, who, when, where, and why. Enter the five W's. If you have a plan for the public, they might say yes to you. You're, not only one cent, they might give you two cents. You know, because we, you're, you're in a, in a situation, the situation that you're in is the same situation that I'm in. I would like to see this, this county just go real, real, um, I mean, uh, positive and, and a lot of dollars coming in here. But how you present it to the public and your plan, if you do have a plan, that's, that was my issue and I think that needs to be worked on.
Thank you, Letty.
Thank you.
And I think that was the, uh, that, that was my thought, that I agree with, with a lot of what Commissioner, the one thing I do wanna say, 'cause he said a couple of times that, that we need to create wealth. Government does not create wealth, okay? We don't do that. Um, that's up to the entrepreneurs and small businesses and, you know, people, the investors. We don't create it. Um, but what we do do is what we're doing. We're, we're, as Commissioner Goss pointed out, we are, uh, building an, an infrastructure that, that hopefully is an attraction for the, for the job creators, which is public, which is a private sector, not us. So, aside from that, I, I think it's a good, it's a good idea to discuss it during the year. Come up with a plan in terms of what is it that we're going to do? How is it we're going to do it? Uh, work with our legislators to give us the tools to work with that and, uh, we'll just see what happens. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, and I do apologize if you think I wasn't paying attention. I'm always making notes, I'm always looking down. If I look at you, I don't pay attention, but if I, if I offended you, I do apologize also.
Thank you. Now that we're all through apologizing for everything, let's move on. One more?
Yeah, no, no apologies. No ap, the only apology I have is to employees who haven't gotten a raise.
In four years.
Either cost of living or anything else, any, any other raise in four years. So, our employees in this county have held the line. They have not gotten raises.
Most of them.
The, I mean, there's selective people that have because of, uh, innovative structuring of forfeiture funds and things of that sort. But for the most part, the majority of our employees have not gotten raises in four years, cost of living or otherwise. So, you know, the fact that we've been able to allocate today minimally five hundred dollars, when you divide that by fifty-two weeks, it's not a whole lot of money. But, you know, it is something to start with. And, and, uh, you know, I, I, it's important to note that because we have the hardest-working bunch of folks that I know of, you know, and for us.
Commissioner, I, yeah, I agree with, with everything that's been said by this court. Um, I will tell you that since I came on board, um, there, we have worked and we've looked to our elected officials to cut every year, every year they've cut. But now there's nowhere else to cut. And I think you, two of you, two of the ladies here, I've noticed, have been here in the past few years. And I think you've seen that. Unfortunately, the public doesn't always have interest in coming here and finding out for themselves. And, uh, of course, when we, when they've passed these, uh, these meetings publicly on TV, sometimes it's very, very late at night. And so, they only see what comes out as the headlines. But, you know, um, the employees continue, they've done with less, you know, and with more responsibilities. And I think it's, it's time that we, we compensate them for them. You know, there's a lot of, you can go to work in federal government and they pay them a whole lot more. But we have a good incentive package for them to stay here. And that is a fact that we have very good, um, benefits for them. So, therefore, you know, I think, uh, it's justified that they do, uh, get a raise. I would hope that we would be able to get more money for them. Um, we may not be able to. And as far as the elected official salaries, um, there's been some criticism because two, we had voted in a previous meeting to, excuse me, to raise, uh, two of the elected officials' salaries. Well, for some reason, it was okay to raise somebody else's at one time and now it's not. But ultimately, it's a responsibility that they have taken on when they came on board. And they've done the best to give the services to the public, even though they haven't been compensated or their employees. So, uh, we appreciate your coming forward and letting us know how you feel and, and giving us the opportunity to let you know how some things happen and why we do them.
Thank you, Commissioner. As we mentioned a couple of times about the, the disparity in the salaries between the, the district clerk, county clerk and the tax assessor-collector, um, it was before I became county judge, but if I remember something, the, the tax assessor-collector actually grieved. Remember that grievance group that, that we called out the names and the nine people? Uh, the tax assessor-collector grieved at that moment for, I think, an additional four or five thousand dollars and he justified it. And it passed on a nine-zero vote, so the court had to give it. But that's where the disparity began, okay? Everything else, everything was, you know, even, even, even until, and Tony's here, I don't know if, is that, is that, was it like an oh-five or oh-six? Okay.
Good choice.
Yeah, and so, he grieved. And so, that, that's part of the process that we went through this morning to select a group, uh, that, that, you know, that does that. And so, again, it was a nine-zero vote, so the court had to give it. Uh, if it had been any less than a nine-zero vote, then the court would have had the opportunity to give it thumbs up or thumbs down. So, that's how that disparity happened, if, if I recall. Yeah, 'cause they were all even at some point, I remember. Well, it's got, you know, the, the tenure, and I tell you, and I tell you what, what, what the problem, let me tell you what the problem, there, there's no tenure for elected officials in terms of salary. Let me tell you what the problem's gonna be. You've got elected officials that have been here for twenty, thirty, whatever, years. And, you know, they've worked hard for, I don't know, thirty-two years. They've gotten their salaries up to whatever it is. At the time that they retire, you know, whenever that'll be, you're gonna have somebody fresh come in, brand-new, that's gonna basically, depending on who gets elected, with no experience, no tenure, making that salary. Okay? So, they're, they're, they are stepping into that salary of set, whatever, whatever it is, seventy, eighty, you know, whatever the number is. Uh, same thing holds true with the sheriff. I think he's the highest, you know, he was, he's up in the nineties. Uh, and, 'cause he grieved, I believe. So, I think it's important to note that whomever comes after that, they, they walk into that salary regardless of the, they could be, with no disrespect intended, it could be somebody that just graduated, you know, from, from home, from Homer Hannah High School and runs for office and...
Lahana.
Reporter and, and, you know, protest vote, that person gets elected and they're making eighty-five thousand dollars. And they don't have anywhere near the wealth of experience that those that have been there for, you know, for, for numerous terms.
I know an aerospace engineer that went to Hannah High School.
Well, I went too. Anyway, Joe?
Judge, uh, you wouldn't have to train another county clerk for another twelve years, that's how long it's gonna take me to catch up with, uh, Judge Dancy, okay? With that in mind, uh, let me make a correction. I remember when we went before the grievance committee, it was three of us, uh, Aurora de la Garza, Tony Sagui and myself. And I spoke for all three of us and they gave us a fifty-four hundred dollar car allowance.
I don't, I didn't think car allowances could be grieved.
At that time, it was legal. I don't know how.
Okay.
Okay? But it happened. But it happened. And then, uh, uh, the tax collector transferred his, uh, car allowance to, uh, salary. We were not allowed to do that, I don't know why. And then, uh, when the year...
Probably 'cause you didn't ask, probably.
Yes, we did.
With not, I don't think you can grieve... With not, I don't think you can grieve car allowances.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
You grieve salaries?
But it is what it is, whatever it is, okay.
At, at that time, it was legal, okay?
Tell us your recollection.
Yeah, that's my recollection. And then, uh, the year that we got a $1,000 raise, uh, the tax collector got his $1,000 plus $7,200.
Because of the car allowance.
Plus, it's, right.
I don't have any problems, like we discussed transferring the car allowance to, to your salaries, like we discuss. I've got no problem with that, okay?
And that's, and that's how the tax collector got.
Disparity.
$7,200 ahead of it and also plus the 3% that he got on, on.
Right. Well, at that point, it's all even, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know.
So what you're saying is he had a $5,400 car allowance, that went to his salary. Then he didn't have a car allowance, he got a $1,000 raise with everyone else, then he got a $7,200 car allowance.
Yes.
And then that car allowance also went back to his salary.
No, I don't think, I, I don't think, I don't think that's right. I, I, I don't think that's accurate, but I wasn't here when, when all that happened, but Tony's here or anybody.
Well, we have our budget officer, Javier, can you pull those numbers for us? I seem to remember a $7,200 car allowance.
There was.
Was there or not, Martha?
There was a $7,200 car allowance, um, and, yeah, I don't know.
In 2010, and it got put into salary?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, at our last discussion of setting the maximum amounts, Mr. Rivera and Ms. de la Garza were asking to take their $5,400 car allowance and put it into their salary. So where I came up with the 80,000 as the max was giving that additional 2,000 that the commissioner's court had originally gave, given to Mr. Isaguirre when they gave him a $7,200 car allowance. Because what I was hoping was, we give him the extra two that Mr. Isaguirre got and there's not gonna be any more coming back later and getting a car allowance again. I mean, this will be it. We don't get him up to the 86,000 that Mr. Isaguirre makes, but we get him up to 80 and let's call it quits. And that's.
Eighty-four?
No, it's 80,000. In other words, they, just adding the car allowance to their salary would take them from like 72 to 77. And then they get 960 for the phone, 78, whatever. So I had suggested, let's put him at 80. And all it is, is the extra 2,000 that we had given Mr. Isaguirre, or this court had, I wasn't part of it, but that this court had given him, we give it to him now and put him at an even 80. And then from here on out, no one gets car allowances. I mean, that's it, because if we keep going back and forth, then it's just a, a ladder. And so my suggestion was, let's go to the 80. And then I also suggested, so it doesn't impact general fund, take it out of my own salary. Take, out of my salary what it's gonna cost to get them to 80, so there's no impact on general fund.
Well, that got voted down and I, again, I think every, every year stand, should stand and every budget should stand on its own merit. What I remember was that Tony grieved, is that, is that the same time that Joe and Aurora grieved as well? You grieved, you grieved another time, didn't you? Right, and that's where the disparity came. It wasn't this court's action. It was he grieved, so there was another time that he grieved where he got that increase.
So he never had a car allowance before that was put into salary?
No, 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 he did. He did have a car allowance, but car allowances are not greevable, I don't believe.
Right, but twice he's had car allowances that go into salary?
I don't know.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't think so either. So I think that the disparity in, in the, in the salaries, cause he grieved, every elected official can grieve. The point is that, the point is that we're here with this budget and I don't believe that any elected official should receive more in compensation regardless of the reasoning for it than the regular rank and file. That's, that's my position. No matter how.
Well, then we should probably set them all the same.
Well, then bring them down.
Everybody, what's the lowest one?
What do you mean?
Who's our lowest paid elected official? Let's set them all at the same. Then everybody gets paid the same.
Well, if you wanna make that motion, that's fine.
Well, no, but that's what you're saying, that everybody should get paid the same regardless of rank?
That's not what I said. That's not what I said. What I said was, I did not support, I will not support a raise for any elected official that is higher than the amount we're going to give the rank and file employees. That's what I said. And I've always been consistent with that. So any elected official is, is welcome to grieve. Tony, I, I remember vaguely that he grieved apart from when, when Aurora, Joe, and him went. He grieved another part of that and I think that's where the disparity began. Is that right, Tony? That's what I remember, but it's been a long time.
Judge, that did not happen.
Well, I'm just telling you what Tony's saying right there.
I'm, I'm the, uh, record keeper of this county and everything we discussed back there. And the, the announcement in the newspaper was for the salary that he's got now.
What's back, but I don't understand what back there is.
At the back room where you guys figure out all the details, you know, uh, the conference room or whatever.
No, no, I know, but I don't, I have, I don't have any idea what you're talking about. What are you talking about?
My understanding that you proposed it to our budget officer.
Proposed what?
That Tony get an additional $7,200 plus the $1,000 raise.
I don't remember proposing that.
And it was voted right here after the announcement in the newspaper. So how can he agree?
I don't, I don't know, I don't think about that, Joe.
Hold it. I can bring you the, the newspaper clipping. How can he agree before that newspaper clipping?
The newspaper clipping said we were getting raises when we specifically said that we were excluded from raises a week ago.
You're talking about another budget, you're talking about this budget.
Talking about two, three years ago.
We're not talking about this budget.
I have no idea.
We're talking about the budget where everybody got, the last time we got a raise.
Four years ago.
Four years ago.
Four years ago, was it five? Five years.
Four, I guess.
Four. The, the proposal by the budget committee or whatever prepares the budget was that everybody get $1,000. Everybody, all the elected officials, plus all the employees. And that Tony get $1,000 plus $7,200 car allowance. He didn't go before the grievance committee because as you mentioned right now.
That's correct.
Because as you mentioned right now.
That's correct.
As you mentioned right now.
For the fourth time.
You can't, you can't agree for allowance.
That's correct, but you said that you grieved for a car allowance.
Back in, when Gilbertino Hosa was here.
Well, but, but the rules of the grievance committee don't change, just because.
I know that.
Right, so I don't know how you grieve that to the committee.
We, we agreed $5,400, it was Aurora, Tony, and myself. Cause I was the spokesman for the group and you and Jim Matt sat in the audience and came up and said that you were against it. Do you remember that?
I probably did, if you're asking for money, sure.
So you had two shots at us on the grievance committee and then on.
I didn't have on the grievance committee.
What's that?
I don't think I had on the grievance committee back then.
You sat in the audience.
Yeah, you said I had two shots at you.
With Jim Matt.
Right.
And both of you got up and spoke and said that you were against it.
Right.
And then at the commissioner's court meeting, you again voted against it.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Well, you couldn't have voted in the grievance committee.
I wasn't on the grievance committee and I don't vote on the.
I'm not saying that you were in the grievance committee.
Well, I don't.
You were in the audience.
I think, I think, look, this is, this is real, you're, you're not, you're, Joe, you're not gonna convince me at this point to give a raise to two people that are, that's higher than everybody else.
I'm not trying to convince you because you're not gonna give me a raise.
Exactly, so.
I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to convince you.
I don't understand what the point is.
But I'm trying to set the record straight.
Okay.
You know, the record straight is that he didn't agree, grieve for $7,200 for the car allowance.
He's telling me that he grieved and you, and you told me that he, that you grieved for a car allowance.
Nobody grieved that year.
I'm just telling you what, Tony's back there telling me that he did grieve.
Nobody, nobody grieved that year.
Let me see if I can clear this up. What you're saying is he was given a $7,200 car allowance without grieving.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
Yes.
And that's correct. Martha, was he given a $7,200 car allowance? Like, whenever it happened, he was. He didn't have to grieve that, he was just given that.
Just like everybody else was given car allowances.
Right, but that's what he's trying to, that's what he's trying to say.
But not everybody got a $7,200 car allowance. And I think that's what is, the, the point that's trying to be made here, okay? It was okay back then to approve that and now that we're trying to, just for two people, trying to be able to bring them up close to Mr. Isaguirre, you know, it's not okay. I, I remember that it was the car allowance being shifted, we voted to shift it into his salary.
Right, I don't think there's any dispute there.
I don't think.
No, no one is disputing that. And that's why I said, you know, I don't have any problem transferring the car allowance that you're currently getting over to your salary.
But I, I'm not disputing that, Judge.
Okay, so then.
I'm not disputing that. The only thing that I'm disputing is the fact that you're saying that he went before the grievance committee to agree the car allowance.
No, I never said that. You said that.
No, no.
You said that you all went, no, no, no. I never said grieve car allowance, you said that you all went.
I said, I said, back with Gilbertino Hosa.
Well, it doesn't matter that.
Your, your, your partner.
I understand that, but I'm saying, I'm saying.
Wait, let, let me finish.
Well, please, Joe, we're not getting anywhere because, I mean, Tony can come in and say that he grieved it. I'm just going by what he said. If you're saying that he's being untruthful, then tell him he's being untruthful, but don't tell me.
Maybe he is.
I don't know. The point is that car allowances are not greevable. You said, right? But you said that you grieved them, I said you can't, so.
In 192, the year that, that, that we got the $5,400 car allowance.
I don't know what happened before I was here, I don't know.
Your friend, Gilbertino Hosa was on the, the county judge.
Right.
And he asked us to go before the grievance committee and we went, all three of us. And they gave us a $5,400 car allowance. Now you come in and you say, that is, cannot be agreed.
No, I'm not, that's, that's what I've always been told.
And commissioner's court approved the $7,200 car allowance.
Okay.
See, and the $1,000 raise.
Right, okay, okay, fine, so we're clear that. So then, Tony, did you or did you not grieve?
Did you order the code red?
Look, come up here because I'm, I'm not gonna go back and. Okay? So there was a time that you came up by yourself and you grieved to the grievance committee for $5,000. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Isaguirre, when did you get the $7,200 car, blah, $7,200 car allowance?
2010.
You don't remember?
I think it was 2010 or 2011.
2010, before that.
Before that?
Do you know, Martha? Can someone go pull the records so we can just put this to rest? Can you pull it up?
Not right now.
Okay.
Javier?
My question is simple. The year that you got the $7,200 car allowance, the year before, what was your car allowance? You didn't have one. So you went from no car allowance to 7,200. And I think that's his point. He's trying to say, he didn't have a car allowance, this court gave him a $7,200 car allowance, didn't give him a raise but gave him a car allowance. Previous to that, he had a car allowance that he had rolled into his salary. Is that correct? Okay, in addition to that, he grieved, correct?
That's, that's what I'm hearing, yeah.
Okay.
I was not there.
So just so it's clear, there was one year when Mr. Isaguirre had no car allowance. And the reason he didn't have one is because previous to that, he had rolled in his then-car allowance into his salary. That's what had happened. So that's why he didn't have one. A couple of years passed and all of a sudden, he got a $7,200 car allowance. And that is, I think, what you're trying to say, correct? Okay, so you're saying that that was a $7,200 raise he got by the court? But it wasn't a raise, it was a car allowance?
Well, but if that were the case, wouldn't the disparity be a lot larger than $2,800?
No, it's actually, that's what it is, it's 7,000 right now. If, if we put them at 80, it's a seven, it's a $6,000 difference if we put them at 80.
Javier?
I'm just waiting.
Oh, I thought, I thought you had some input about.
Okay, but, you know. I mean, the, the only thing that I can add to this is, is this. Within his department and I guess now within the, the county clerk and district clerks, there, there was a vehicle where at one time, the tax assessor was driving a county vehicle and then there was a time when he was driving his personal vehicle. And so when he was, you're driving a county vehicle, he didn't have a car allowance. When he was driving his personal vehicle, he did. And that's kinda how it went back and forth, the way I remember it. But I don't have those documents in front of me, but.
Okay.
And Mr. Rivera does not have a county vehicle right now.
There's some in his department, but he does not have one assigned to him.
He doesn't have an assigned vehicle.
Correct.
He don't have an assigned vehicle. He's got a car allowance.
Correct.
But that, this has already been kinda a result, hasn't it? We both, this was voted on last week?
No.
Maximum.
You have to vote on it today.
That was the maximum we could pay. Today we set the salaries. I moved it.
We're still in the public hearing right now.
Yes, we're still in the public hearing.
Any, any other public comments before we close hearing?
Yes, does it have to be voted on today? We don't have a public hearing. You have to, yes, has to. Yeah, we're in public hearing.
Do I hear, uh, you're not judge yet, Dan, hold on. The what? Right, okay, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Sanchez, so I have a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Gatzal in favor, it's gonna be by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam carries. Uh, item F, consideration action regarding the setting of elected officials' compensation. What do you need from us today?
I need for y'all to decide or to set the salaries.
Yeah, but if we don't know what we're gonna give employees yet, how can we set the elected officials?
If, if you don't set it today, we will have to re-advertise, um, because the public was notified that y'all were gonna set them today. And that triggers how many days they have in order to file a grievance. Uh, they have five days to file notice. All of this, then you have to have the grievance committee hearing. After that's done, depending on what happens, then the commissioner's court has to take action on it.
Okay.
Now, do that employees over 50, we're not getting any kind of salary raise, did that, did that include elected officials or was that a separate issue? How do we just?
Well, yeah, this, this all may be moot because Commissioner Gatzas motion that, and seconded and voted on was to exclude everybody making under 51,000. And what he told me right now, huh? Yeah, that excluded those who are making over 51,000. And what he said was, that included elected officials. So all this discussion may be a moot point, cause we've already voted on that. So it may be a moot point in terms of the Joes and the Tonys and anybody else making over 51,000 because we've already voted to not give anyone making 51, 50,000 or more any raise. Because that, that's what your numbers reflect. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna make an exception for elected officials, giving them whatever it is, then I think we need to stand ready to do it for everybody in Cameron County that's making over 51,000. You just can't arbitrarily say, well, elected officials, you're excluded, we're gonna give you everything no matter what your salary is.
How many employees do we have that make over 51,000?
I don't know.
Any idea, Javier?
Yeah, uh, it was, uh, in the general fund, it was a hundred and.
Like.
I think it was like 130.
130?
Oh, I didn't realize we had that many.
130? In other words, the excluded number?
Yes.
In the general fund was 100?
No, that, I'm, I apologize, that's, that's the number of people that, that receive raises. The, the ones that, um, 51,000, I don't think I have that with me.
You know, cause if it's a miniscule number, you know, why exclude them?
Then you'll exclude anybody.
Right.
I, I, we don't have.
1.5 million data, you're not gonna make it.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, you're.
I, I, I had them lumped together, I, as a total, I don't, I, I don't have them separate.
So 130 total, but.
Well, that was, that included both people who received raises and that were over 51,000.
Do you have a guesstimate, you know?
Um, it's, it's not really a lot.
I know. You know, because we have people that have worked, you know, I, I mean, I mentioned that when we were trying to squeeze the numbers-
Yeah.
-to fit into the budget, okay? You know, we're, we're, we've closed in the budget to the point to where there's like sixty-eight thousand dollars there available. Right?
Correct. And it's just here, you have six.
And this, this also excludes any departments that have been given, like, with forfeiture money increases, right? They're excluded regardless.
Okay. I'm just saying, now, I don't want to, you know, and I'll give one example.
Penalize?
Like, like, you know, the guys that are working with the computer center, implementing what they're doing. They've been working hour upon hour upon hour, you know, and there's others, you know. I'm just picking on you guys, because I know that there's been an effort that you've had to do regardless. And, you know, I mean, I, I don't want to exclude that department if we have funds available for a five hundred, at least, raise for them. But those are my thoughts. I mean, exclude the ones that already got raises.
But the ones that haven't, I agree. I think everyone should get an increase. I just, my only concern is, I think the people at the low end that earn the least should get more of an increase than the higher earner. Not, and, and only because of the fact that they're impacted harder. Like, maybe we could say, if you're over fifty thousand, you get less of an increase?
Five hundred?
I think everybody should be, everybody should be treated the same, you know, um-
Well, then, let's set all elected officials the same salary.
Okay, you want to move them up?
I mean, if we're going to treat everybody the same.
I'm terms, you know, Commissioner, really, in terms of treating them the same when it comes to raises, if you, you know what, you want to bring everybody down, or take everybody up, you pay for it, either way.
Well, I'm just saying, if you want to treat everybody the same-
I want to treat everybody the same.
Let's do it the same across the board.
Well, like I said, every budget year stands on its own. And I don't have a problem treating, if you want to give five hundred dollars to everybody, everybody, including elected officials, that's fine. Everybody making over fifty thousand, that's, I've got no problem with that.
As long as there's money.
As long as it stays within the six hundred and twenty-eight thousand that we have available. That's it, whatever that is. So, my motion would be to set the elected offici, I mean, unless there could be some kind of a windfall in the next week or two, generating enough money to go up, which I don't see happening, then I would make a motion to set the elected official salaries at the same amount that we're going to give to everyone, including those making over fifty-one thousand, of five hundred dollars for everybody across the board. That's my motion.
Well, but we haven't set employees' salaries.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just doing that, we're going to, we're going to assume, we're going to do it five hundred dollars for employees. Everybody, whether they're making twenty thousand or eighty thousand, everybody gets the same amount of money.
Judge, why don't you go back, if, if you're thinking that way, then I think you should go back to the item and maybe amend the motion that was made earlier.
Item D? No, because this motion on the fifty-one thousand was made at another meeting.
Oh, okay, was it today?
It wasn't made today, because that, that motion is in place right now.
But you can make, but you can make another motion and-
We can make a motion on D.
Well-
Based on this budget, budget discussion.
Well, I just made a motion to, to do that.
Well, only for elected officials' compensation?
Well, then, we can bring that, the employees at another time, if you want, but for now, if we know we're going to give five, at least five hundred dollars, which, that's going to be, looks like the number, you know, and hopefully, work out the, the logistics later, but my motion is to give elected officials, every elected official, regardless of what they're making, a five hundred dollar increase.
Excluding commissioners' court.
Excluding commissioners' court.
See? It's this far, right?
That's my, well, that's my motion.
And I would second that.
Move by me, second by Commissioner Gatsal. Any discussion?
Which would be the same raise that all the other employees get.
Correct. And I, I guess for clarification, are you moving the auto allowance of the county clerk and district clerk into the salary, or?
If they want it moved, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, you need to decide that right now.
That's fine. I have no problem with that.
So, amend the motion to transfer their car allowance to salary.
Plus?
Plus five hundred dollars.
A five hundred.
My amended motion would be to do that and put them at eighty.
Okay, well, first, we're-
Well, I got my, I'm going to, that's my motion, and, and transfer the, the, the fifty-four hundred dollars as part of their compensation, and then, five hundred dollars.
Well, but they make more than fifty-one thousand, so.
Well, I know. That's why we're going to go ahead and include all employees. Yeah, we're back to square one, in terms, including everybody, okay?
Nothing to do with the fifty-one thousand.
Right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, sign up by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so now, come up with another motion.
The same motion, but setting them at eighty.
Setting who?
Setting Aurora and Joe at eighty. What we originally said at the maximum?
As published.
As published.
Second.
Without, as published with the exclusion of commissioners' court.
Right, but those, those two, that's what I'm referring to. Those two positions as published, with a salary of eighty thousand and a phone allowance of nine hundred and sixty, with no auto allowance.
Right. And I would also say that the cost of that increase reduced my salary. Take it out of mine.
We can't.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can.
That's my motion.
Reduce his salary right now, you can.
That's my motion.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Sanchez. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, sign up by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
I will support that motion, because budget neutral.
Fine. Okay, what else we got?
Uh, can we go back to D?
Yes or no?
He voted yes. I voted nay.
Okay.
Can we go back? Because it's budget neutral, the way that it was proposed.
That's correct. Okay, D? What do you want to go back to D for?
So, we can agree on the fact that we're going to include all employees instead of just fifty-one and below.
Well, we don't have to do that today.
We just want to direct him, right?
Yeah, that, that's a direction to put on, I mean, that, just put it back into your numbers. We don't have to, we don't have to do anything today with it.
Yeah, because that's going to increase, uh, the cost by, I think it was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Okay, so, what's your word?
Okay, but we only had six twenty-eight. We just used six oh four. It's going to increase it by how much?
I think it was a hundred and seventy.
Not that much, because-
No, I'm just going by what he's saying.
You said a hundred and sixty, no?
I don't know. I'm going by what he's saying.
Can I give you the exact, it was a hundred?
You didn't have the exact number of employees.
Hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
More. Okay, now, where, where are y'all going to get this money now?
Where are you getting, where are you getting a hundred and seventy-nine thousand more?
You said to include even the ones that received increases this year.
No, sir.
No, no, no.
No, you said, you said all employees.
Just over fifty that didn't get the increase.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Right.
Right.
And how much is that?
Doesn't have the exact number.
I thought it was one sixty, is what I thought.
That was a total.
No, that was the total.
Oh, I thought, okay.
It wasn't over fifty-one. It's, it's, it's not that many, uh-
Well, you, you need to have twenty-four thousand.
Correct.
At least.
So, I'll bring that number back for next week.
Which is forty-eight employees.
No, whatever. Okay, all right. Okay.
Now, you just need to-
I had a motion, a second. Uh, we're done.
No, we got executive session.
Well, I, aside from that, okay.
You adjourn this meeting, and then you go back into the other.
Special meeting.
Huh?
You need to adjourn this meeting, and then you go back into the special meeting.
I do, yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting, second by, I mean, move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Ednandez, all in favor, sign up by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Oh, yeah, but we have to reopen the other one?
Well, you had to go back to the, yeah.
Do I hear a motion to reopen the recessed special meeting?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatsal in favor, sign up by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. To discuss the following executive session item, confer with commissioners' court legal counsel under the authority, Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one-two, regarding district clerk's office and possible civil legal remedies. Now, how about the other executive session item?
There's only one, I think.
Oh, okay, that's it. You're right. Okay. Well, you know what? We need to adjourn this meeting then, not recess it. We, it, all right, okay.